I call to order this town council's regular meeting Monday, May first, two thousand twenty-three. Please rise for the pledge.
Let me just flag United States of America to remember one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, we take roll.
Mary Lakind.
Here.
Councilmember Romanella.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, real quick, I want to introduce Bart Miller. Bart is filling in for Bob Cole tonight, so wanted to counsel the mayor to meet Mr. Miller.
Welcome, Mr. Miller.
Hi, Dad.
I've already prepared him for shot across the bow. Um, okay, before us, we have an agenda and a consent agenda. Is there any modifications or questions to the agenda?
I have one question.
Okay.
Um, so, so, Mr. Foreman, I just want to bring this up because it's on this consent agenda, the, um, the, right, the annexation petition and that there's a, there are floating around petitions against the rezoning for that. Could we just verify that whether or not those are valid or not for this particular? And, and I don't need to know now, if you need to check with legal staff just before this gets too far down the road so that we're not dealing with it later?
Definitely, we can get you that information.
Thank you.
They, so they're, they're just being routed. They aren't done yet because I haven't seen or heard anything. So, but I guess that's my question.
Uh, uh, excuse me, I didn't hear you.
They haven't been submitted to anyone, right? Because I haven't.
No, they're, they're sitting in, in the someplace from.
You mean from the last go around?
Right. I just want to see if those are still valid or not valid.
Okay.
We can find that out for you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions about the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Mary Lakind.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion passes seven to zero. Um, next up, number four disclosures of conflicts of interest. Um, Mr. Miller.
Represent, thank you. We do represent other local government entities here in El Paso County, but we have no conflicts of interest.
Okay. So there's no disclosures and no reason to vote. Is that how we're going to, since this is the first time we're doing a disclosure of conflicts of interest where we don't actually have one? What, is there any recommended wording on how we get through this? We just, you disclose that and we're done, four is gone, we're, we can cross it off?
Yes, yes. If, uh, you know, if someone discloses one, then you can deal with it at that point.
Okay, so we have nobody to disclose a conflict of interest, right? Okay, that was easy. Then we'll move on to number five proclamations, Mr. Foreman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, this is the fifty-fourth annual professional municipal clerks week, and if I could have our clerks stand up. Ms. Laura Hogan and Tina. It's our town clerk and our deputy clerk. I think everybody knows them, but for our crowd, uh, the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, and the agencies of the governments at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of professional municipal clerk. And I'll let you finish the rest because I think that's your part.
You, you don't have that on. Which one? Now, therefore, the Monument Town Council hereby proclaims April thirtieth through May sixth as professional municipal clerks week, and further extends appreciation to our professional municipal clerks and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, proclaim this first day of May, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to give appreciation to Laura Hogan and Tina. As you know, they do a great job for us. They're here every meeting. I don't think y'all missed one, as far as I know.
So, great job, guys. Thank you. I will find the original in the packet here in a little bit and sign it. Okay, we'll move on to number six presentations, Jackson Creek Parkway widening update, Ms. Booth.
I'd like to invite Steve Murray with FHU up to the podium now. He'll be doing the presentation for you.
Council members, um, I am Steve Murray. I'm with Felsberg Holmulevig, and it is my pleasure to present to you the Jackson Creek Parkway project. Yeah, I'm good. Got the slides up. Um, this is a project that, uh, really has a, uh, it's a collaborative effort that is not only collaborative between the agencies, between the town of Monument, El Paso County, um, Triview Metropolitan District, uh, CDOT, but also it's a, a number of consultants as well that are all working together collaboratively. Felsberg Holmulevig is the lead for the Jackson Creek Parkway project, but then, uh, you also have HDR working on one oh five. You have Kimley Horn, uh, working on the, uh, Higbee section. And, uh, classic, FHU and Classic are working collaboratively on Jackson Creek. And, uh, I'll go through some more of those details as we go along. And of course, we're working with town, town staff as well with Mike and Sheila and Greg and, and, uh, and so this is a, this is a fairly, uh, large collaborative project. If you'd like some additional information, I want to point you to the website. Uh, and so that's what's on screen now. Uh, you can go to JacksonCreekParkway.com, and there's a number of project details there, there. But for now, I would like to present, uh, just a, a few, uh, project details as we go through next slide. So, as you know, right now, um, Jackson Creek Parkway is completed all the way up to Higbee. Uh, we're looking at, uh, Jackson Creek Parkway as it goes, as it comes up to Higbee, and you can see, looking north, uh, you just have two lanes. Both, uh, two lanes that continue all the way up to one oh five, and this project, the project goal is to continue the projects that have been, that have been completed from the south all the way to the north up to one oh five. And so it'll be a four lane section. It'll look something very similar to this. And so what is included in the design, next slide? The cross section is going to include sidewalks on both sides, bike lanes, both sides, uh, lighting, uh, possibly in the median, maybe some on the outside. We're still working on that, but there'll be dark skylighting. I know that that's important for the corridor. Uh, we have a landscape median, and we'll be addressing drainage and water quality through a storm system that will then go into water quality ponds before they exit out. So, next slide. So the budget, uh, real quick, the, the project we're estimating, we don't really know exactly what the project, uh, total budget is going to be because prices are fluctuating wildly. Um, I think, uh, probably on the high side, we're looking at twenty-three million dollars, and if that is the scenario, then uh, right now, the town of Monument is short about seven point seven million dollars. And so we're looking for grant funding to try to make up that difference. Um, and we've already, uh, due to the town's diligence, they have been able to, uh, obtain about seven point six million dollars so far. Uh, there are some fees, uh, the developments that are in the corridor, uh, total up to about five point six million. Uh, those are percentages of the total project cost. And El Paso and we believe Triview are contributing a million dollars, and she, if that's changed, but that's what we think as of right now. So, so that's, that's where the budget stands currently. And how does that break up in the corridor? So, um, as I mentioned, both FHU and Classic are teaming up to, uh, complete the work that is being done on Jackson Creek Parkway. Classic is doing the design right around one oh five, which is honestly one of the more challenging sections, uh, and they're doing that because they have a number of developments that need to get access and that are moving very quickly. And so they'll be presenting on that here a little bit later. But I do want to draw your attention to the four point one million dollars. Uh, they are contributing to this project and in kind work, so their design and their construction of this section, uh, is their contribution to the project. And then FHU will then tie into the classic work, and we are, um, uh, we are working with them very, very closely as we then, uh, will continue that from basically about Fat Tire all the way to then Higbee, where Kimley Horn is doing the work along Higbee. And so that, that is kind of the breakdown. Let's see that, uh, Kimley, uh, Triview will be contributing, like I said, a million dollars, uh, to the intersection of Jackson Creek Parkway and Higbee. Whereas El Paso County, you can see in the, uh, in the black down there, uh, are contributing about a million dollars to the intersection of Jackson Creek and one oh five, and then, um, the town's portion primarily is then that sixteen point nine million dollars, uh, that has the FHU logo on it in blue. All right, going to the next slide. So now I'd like to take a little bit of time just talking about the timeline. There's so many projects that are in this area. When are they going to get constructed? How are they going to all work together? And so I'll just kind of walk you through real quickly. These are some projected timelines. Uh, so in Q two, two thousand twenty-three, basically, as we enter into that now, uh, we're looking at one oh five starting construction, and we're also looking at the interim improvements of Jackson Creek Parkway starting, and the interim improvements along Jackson Creek Parkway are going to provide the necessary access into these developments that are coming in. And so next slide, I'll give you a little bit of detail as we move into this. So I mentioned the interim improvements. So Classic will be constructing some improvements that, um, that will allow access onto their development, and you can see that on the, on the map here. Uh, these will be starting soon, um, pending approval. And so moving to the next slide. In addition to that, then El Paso County is working with HDR, and I believe Wilson and Company in constructing all the one oh five improvements. And so both of these will be coming online here real shortly. And moving to the next slide. So then in two thousand twenty-three, uh, Q four, uh, we're looking at a number of other projects that are going to be um, kicking in, and these will be, these will extend from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five, and I'll touch on those in detail. So, next slide. All right, so I mentioned Higbee and, uh, Triview Metropolitan District is, uh, contracted with Kimley Horn, and they are working on all the improvements that are along the Higbee area, and they're expected to start construction Q four, two thousand twenty-three. And the next slide. Likewise, um, I mentioned the, uh, interim improvements that Classic will be providing. Well, there's also ultimate improvements, and that will take the roadway, not just for providing some left turn lanes into access, but, uh, we're all, they will also be, uh, constructing four lanes all the way to one oh five. Um, and they will also be making some improvements along one oh five. There'll be walls that are included in that, and that'll be the ultimate section that Classic will be constructing, and then we'll tie in about where that dashed red line is that you see on screen. And so then that's, that's where, once that's constructed, that's turned gray, that's, uh, the section that Classic is constructing is the gray section. FHU will then tie into that. We kind of see this all happening as one project. So Classic would then start probably the same contractor ideally, and then we would continue all the way down the corridor with our project. And so really, that would act as one, two different consultants, but, uh, one project ultimately in construction. And next slide. And so that kind of gives you a quick overview of how these projects are going to be coming. They're coming quickly, uh, and there's going to be a number of them happening. Uh, and we want to, uh, draw your attention also to a public meeting that is going to be coming up. We'll be presenting, uh, May twenty-third at Palmer Ridge High School. And so hopefully you can join us, and we'll present some more detail there. We'll be doing a joint public meeting with El Paso County as they talk about the one oh five improvements. And with that, that's a very quick overview of what's coming your way, and I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions from the council? I have one, uh, if you can go to the Higbee, the slide of, uh, Higbee Road.
Yes.
There is one section on, uh, Higbee that shows a roundabout at Bowstring.
Yes.
And who's, who's funding the Higbee Road?
That's, that is being funded through Triview.
They're, they're doing all of Higbee Road, including the roundabout?
They are.
All the way to, to the portion that we town monument adds. That's where the yellow stops, the yellow portion, and then it becomes county again.
Okay. I'm, I've just got another road in the back of my mind, which is why I wanted to see who was funding that. Thank you.
Right. So I have a, I have a question on, on Jackson Creek Parkway. Um, on your high resolution drawings on the website, which aren't very high resolution, it's a little difficult to tell, but it looks like on the northern section where it goes to the curve there, that, um, initially on the west side, that that's one lane. Is that one lane? Wouldn't that be the existing two lane roads?
Let's see, um, on screen.
It's, it's just hard to tell on the website, but it looked like there was one line of traffic.
It'll be a four lane, so in the ultimate configuration, it'll be two lanes each direction.
Right, and that, but I don't mean ultimately. It looked like in one of those phases.
Oh, in the interim phase?
Right, but the existing road is two lane, so the existing two lane road would remain two lanes, correct?
It would, yeah.
And then the new two lane roads would be to the east, correct?
Yes, the additional two lane roads will be widened to the east, correct?
Okay, it's just, it was hard to tell on the website.
Yeah. Yeah, on the website, we were more trying to demonstrate what's going to be constructed when, not necessarily the details. So, yeah, we can always provide additional information if you'd like it.
Okay, and it's always subject to getting funding, which we don't have.
It is, yeah. And the project right now is at thirty percent level of design, so we even have, uh, we have thirty percent plans put together so that we could show you more detail.
So I, I've got a question on that funding. There's a portion that's to the town that goes, uh, to the south of the section that, um, Classic is doing, right? And Classic is putting up a lot of money to assist in the construction of this. Uh, we do have other developers that are between Classics Development and the Y as well as South.
CSI developers.
Right, uh, is the intent to ask them to partake in this?
Definitely, definitely. We've already had those conversations and we're.
I think it's fair that they do.
Yep, but the unfortunate thing about Jackson Creek Parkway is you have so much public, um, development already there. You've got the high school, you've got the YMCA and stuff like that that never were required to, uh, participate in the future construction of Jackson or widening of Jackson Creek Parkway, and so we can't put all that on the new developers. And so that's why the town has so much, um, you know, a piece of the pie is we have to do that.
Probably should put a toll in to get into Lewis Palmer High School.
There you go. I think you, I'll, I'll let you have that conversation with the.
I'll call KC and ask him.
Yeah.
The fees have been established based on estimated traffic impacts, and so, uh, the five point six million that you see there includes the CSI.
Okay.
Anticipated participation.
Excellent, thank you. All right, is there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is, uh, public hearing items ordinance number zero nine two zero two three, an ordinance amending title five, chapter five dot three eight of the Monument Municipal Code, Ms. Erickson.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight I bring you an ordinance amending title five, chapter five point three of the Monument Municipal Code. On May eighth, two thousand twenty-one, Colorado Governor Jared Polis signed the law Senate Bill twenty-one zero eight-two amending CRS forty-four three four oh four, which created a state alcohol beverage festival permit. The festival alcohol permit allows licensed holders to participate in festivals. Currently, the licenses are, or currently the permits are filed directly with the state. The clerk's office is requesting to review and locally approve these permits. Once locally approved, the permit will be submitted to the Department of Revenue, also the, known as the LED. Um, locally approving the permits will allow the municipality to know what festivals are happening in the town limits that are not on public property and events that will not qual, will not qualify for a special event liquor permit. The police department will be notified of such events that town can also ensure zoning and other local regulations are met. Place reasonable restrictions on festivals, including location limitations, fencing, health, and safety regulations. Um, staff recommends approval of authorizing the clerk's office to locally approve the festival alcohol permit. And if you have any questions, I am here to answer them.
Um, as I understand this, this ordinance would, uh, how much of the permit process would become administrative? Is it only for something very specific? Or is it all encompassing that all alcohol or permits for events that require alcohol would be taken out of the hands of the council?
So with this ordinance, with us being able to locally approve it, it would only be for, um, certain licensed, like already licensed, um, licensees. So like, somebody that already has an establishment with the liquor license, they could apply for this permit, and they could have like a big festival, and other licensed holders can join in.
So.
So they have to be.
Couple of weeks ago, when we had a, a local restaurant apply for the first time, that would not count. It would only be a renewal of that license or for a.
So they can apply just for this as long as they're already licensed.
Right.
So if they wanted to say have like a big like, I don't know, like a party in a parking lot or something, and other licensed vendors wanted to join in on it, they could all be under this one umbrella. Yeah.
Okay, is there anybody else have any questions? And this is a public hearing item, so, um, we will open it up to the public if they'd like to speak for or against, uh, this ordinance. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Um, Mr. Anderson, is there anybody online that would like to speak to this ordinance? Okay, then we'll bring it back for a discussion or a motion.
I'll move to approve ordinance number oh nine, two thousand twenty-three, and ordinance amending title five, chapter five point three of the Monument Municipal Code.
I'll stack it.
Motion and a second, Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Mary Lakind.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion passes seven to zero. All right, ordinance number ten dash two zero two three, or it's approving a preliminary final plat unit development, plan unit development for Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West, filing number one, Ms. Booth.
Hello, I am going to have Jeff Wiltjegren, he's our planner two, present for you tonight. Um, just wanted to let you know, this is one of the first, um, cases that we took back over from Jacobs. So they did all the initial review, and we're taking it over from there to present throughout the process. Um, and then the applicants are here tonight, but I will let Jeff get ready to do the presentation on this for you.
Union Council, thank you so much. Uh, this is a presentation for the Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West, filing number one. This is a preliminary final PUD, and there's also a final plat associated. The project context, this is, uh, located just to the project site is on the fifteen ninety-five slope street, slope side street, southeast of the I twenty-five highway one oh five interchange between I twenty-five and Jackson Creek Parkway. This is just a screenshot of the overall, uh, preliminary final PUD plan. Uh, the request is for an ordinance number ten, twenty, twenty-three, an ordinance approving a preliminary final PUD plan for Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West, filing number one. Uh, some specifics, the project area is twenty-one point seven acres. The southwest portion of the Monument Junction community is where it's located. Proposed uses are single family detached, uh, which of that is sixteen point nine acres. A community park with a stormwater drainage component, uh, making up another four point eight acres. Uh, the density proposed here is eight dwelling units per acre for a proposed one hundred and twenty-nine units. Existing zoning, uh, this is a PUD, uh, to the north, we have the multifamily lot five Monument Junction West, filing number one. To the south, we have vacant commercial land in the PCD zoning district. Uh, to the east, we have PUD again, single family Monument Junction East, filing number one. And to the west, uh, PUD vacant land. Uh, so project history, uh, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty, uh, planned development PD and PD sketch plan for the village was approved. Uh, this, this development's associated with that, now referred to as Monument Junction Plan Unit Development. Uh, comprehensive plan, um, it, it is designated a future land use as mixed use. Uh, the mixed use is defined as a mixture of non-residential, unresidential development that provides convenience goods, services, and employment opportunities for area residents. Uh, the proposed uses are in general conformance with the FLUM or the future land use map. Uh, there are a number of principles, opportunities, and policies that were presented and do associate with what is proposed. Uh, be screen, moving through those quickly, principal LU one, opportunity L U A, opportunity POS A. Uh, keeping these printed here for, uh, record of the presentation. Policy LU one, policy LU three, and policy LU five, again, for the presentation and for record. Uh, traffic study, big components of this, if this is expecting to have four hundred twenty-three trips, uh, per weekday. Uh, the LOS is anticipated to be a LOS of C or better in the short term. Um, the short term impacts of the phase one development are projected to operate LOS C or better during the peak hours at all turning movements of site access. Um, the memo does further indicate that traffic signals may be warranted at the intersection of Slope Side Drive and Jackson Creek Parkway, which currently are not met, uh, based on preliminary analysis of the short term peak hour volumes, and recommends that traffic count monitoring continue to assess future possible traffic signal. And recommends that traffic count monitoring continue to assess future possible traffic signal warrants. Uh, just for your record, uh, and for knowledge LOS level of service, this is just a general table of how that breaks down. Um, an A, however, this is counterintuitive to grades in school. An A is not a necessarily a good score and F is not necessarily a bad score. Uh, long term build out, uh, the three different intersections, Oktoberfest Drive and Jackson Creek Parkway. Uh, roadway improvement will be a stop sign with a right turn only. Um, weekday traffic generated fifty four in the AM, ninety five in the PM, LOS of B. Uh, Slope Side Drive and Jackson Creek Parkway, this is middle uh, of the development along Jackson Creek roadway improvement is a stop sign for now. Uh, a traffic light later if warranted. This is a full movement intersection. Um, weekday traffic generation is seventy eight in the AM, hundred and two in the PM. LOS of B in the AM, C in the PM. Uh, of note that may bring challenges later for a traffic light. Once the full build out of the corridor, the northbound left turn lane has an F uh, LOS rating. Again, not necessarily a bad thing. Uh, Broken Compass Drive and Jackson Creek Parkway is the third intersection on the south end. Roadway improvement is anticipated to be a stop sign, a right turn only is the mov- movement. Uh, weekday traffic will be sixteen in the AM, twenty eight in the PM. Uh, LOS is anticipated to be a B. Drainage basins, um, it flows, the area flows into Dirty Woman Creek and Teach Out Creek. Existing drainage change channel along north edge of the PD has minimal riparian vegetation. It's captioned in track day, which will be a detention pond, also a park. Utilities, uh, we have will serve letters provided for Woodmore Water and Sanitation District number one. Black Hills Energy for gas and Mountain View Electric Association. Um, in terms of other parameters, wildlife, there's no significant wildlife habitats identified on the site. Wildfire, there's really a low at risk rating for the wildfires in the area. And it's of note, there are thirteen fire hydrants that are planned to be built for the development. Uh, as far as geo hazard goes, there's no unusual conditions. Areas of expansive soils, loose and collapsible soils and shallow groundwater fairly typical. Uh, there are mitigation measures that are provided uh, in the geo hazard report. Uh, of note, public improvements, uh, there will be various improvements at all three intersections. And there will be some improvements along the west side frontage of Jackson Creek Parkway associated with the development. Site access, uh, public streets uh, will be slope side street, Broken Compass Drive and October Drive. There will be private roads on site. Uh, this will be for individual lot driveway access and there will be pedestrian trail systems. Uh, currently five foot concrete trails proposed. Land dedication uh, for schools, there's no land dedication uh, but fees in lieu. The total for the project is two hundred thirty thousand, uh, one hundred thirty six dollars. For park uh, dedication, uh, what's required is one point nine six acres. Um, and but four point seven seven eight acres are being provided. As for open space, uh, there's six point two five acres. Uh, the park and open space dedication requirements are met according to staff's review. Public notice was provided uh, to the Gazette on the twenty third of March. Property was posted on the twenty seventh of March. Mailed to owners within five hundred feet on the twenty eighth of March, no letters of opposition or agreement were received. In general, for the purpose of uh, record, staff feels that the uh, review of approval criteria is met for all criteria for the preliminary PUD. Also again, for uh, for record, section eighteen oh three four sixty, final PUD review approval criteria has also been met. This was presented to planning commission on April twelfth. Um, there were two motions and two votes that played out. Motion one of two. That motion was a move that the planning commission recommend approval of the Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West file number one. Preliminary final PUD based on the findings that the proposed preliminary final PUD is in conformance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in the Town of Monuments Land Development Code, sections eighteen oh three four fifty and eighteen oh three four sixty. That motion failed four to three. A second motion was uh, proposed. I'm moving that the planning commission recommend denial of the Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West number one preliminary final PUD because it fails to meet the following criteria from the Town of Monuments Land Development Code, sections eighteen oh three four fifty, eighteen oh three four sixty, eighteen oh three four fifty. That motion passed four to three. The following slides, Mayor, are uh, a retort or re- rereading of the uh, rationale for this second vote. Would you like us to read that fully?
Does the council like to hear it?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion two of two, this this was through Commissioner Hours and his rationale. Again, everything I'm reading to you is in terms of application does not meet the following code criteria or the aspirations of the comprehensive plan. Open quote, C, criteria for review. The preliminary PUD must adequately address the following criteria in a manner consistent with the general public interest, health, safety, and welfare. Number five, the project provides a benefit to the town such as increasing the variety of development to fill a need and or provide amenities for the benefit of the town residents. Number thirteen, under criteria, under C, criteria for review. The plan is consistent with town's comprehensive plan. Moving to the comprehensive plan, page thirty three of sixty four, chapter four, future land use and annexation plan. Last paragraph in bold print. As new development proposals are submitted, it is critically important to maintain a balance between residential and non-residential uses to maintain the overall fiscal health of the community. Non-residential uses have a property taxation rate of twenty nine percent and the added benefit of potential sales tax and real property tax revenue versus a seven point nine six percent property tax rate per residential. Page forty two of sixty four, at mixed use MU, which includes planned unit developments types. A mixture of non-residential and residential development that provides convenience goods, services, and employment opportunities for area residents. Asterisk, mixed use. Note, this includes PUD. Development should promote work, li- live, and play with residential use being subordinate to the non-residential uses. Page fifty of sixty four, opportunities. LUE, capitalize on the three I twenty five interchanges for destination sales tax producing land uses. LUG, encourage highly oriented businesses to locate in the I'm sorry, highway oriented businesses to locate in the mixed use and defined community centers with shared access. Page fifty one of sixty four policies. LU three, allows for a wider array of land use types to meet the changing community needs. Returning to uh, code. Criteria for review, the final PUD must adequately address the following criteria in a manner consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare. The commissioner quotes, the final PUD conforms to or is consistent with the preliminary PUD. This ends the close quote of the commissioner's rationale. There is a there was uh, we we went to council and we asked for attorney uh, information on this. And it was in terms of the sketch plan. Uh, the sketch plan. Basically, this application is being processed under eighteen oh three four thirty for sketch plans approved prior to the effective date of Title eighteen. Assuming that that is true, the property owner has the right to develop based on the original sketch plan. This is the reading and interpretation of the town attorney. Word wording from the code, if the property has received a sketch PD approval but has not been platted, the property may be developed pursuant to the terms of the original sketch PD approval. Provided, the owner shall be responsible for obtaining approval of a preliminary and a final PUD and a final subdivision plat prior to development. Section eighteen oh three four thirty A five MMC. Code interpretation by the town attorney, code prevents the the code prevents the town council from amending or requiring the owner to amend the sketch plan. And the outcome, the applicant is entitled to develop a way that reflects the intent of the associated and approved village sketch plan. Staff recommendation, staff's review and opinion. This is consistent with all applicable development standards. It adequately addresses the criteria in sections eighteen oh three four fifty and eighteen oh three four sixty of Title eighteen Town Land Development Code, and it's generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval. Uh, Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West file number one preliminary final PUD is based on a findings that the proposed preliminary final PUD plan is in conformance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in the Town of Monuments Land Development Code. Now, we could move to questions. Or if you'd like, Mayor, we can go through and fault read through the final plat as well, and then open it up. It's up to you, sir.
I actually have a question about what he just did, though. Um, can you go back a couple of slides? Right there.
Yes.
Um, the outcome statement is whose interpretation?
Town attorneys.
I don't see the attorneys in the email that I've received. I do not see that statement in that email where it specifically says applicant is entitled to develop in a way that reflects the intent of the associated and approved village sketch plan. You, this is the email that uh, was sent to the to the council tonight. Little after five. I I see the code interpretation and agree with that. And have no problem with that. I'm just wondering where that content came.
The the outcome is a statement, just trying to clarify that we're referring to the village sketch plan. And all of what we're talking about. And I and it was not in the email that was provided by staff.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, the other thing that I want to bring up is our packets used to contain a cover sheet for each land use. Um, this council in its entirety has not seen that, but Councilmember Romanella and I remember it. And the purpose of the cover sheet was for us to see the dates that these developments went through each phase. I don't know where it went, but it would have been helpful because we could have very quickly looked at the date that this development went through and what the applicable code was um, at the time, based on the date. So can we get this, the cover sheet put back in so that everybody's, because there's a lot of developments that are coming through that this council has not seen.
Right.
And doesn't understand it, and I would like it put back in place, and I don't understand who approved to get rid of it.
We incorporated it into the staff report itself, so we have a section in the staff report that talks about background and entitlements.
It's not the same as the chart we used to see. It's not, it's not visual. It's, it was a lot easier to see. It was sort of like a visio diagram, a flow chart that showed each step of the sequence of events that this went through.
Probably just a change in staff, just.
We found, I mean, it was a PDF that we were having to cut and paste documents on, so we just incorporated into the staff, so it was all part of the one, the same document. But we can add it back. I mean, we just wanted it all to be, we were trying to get everything into one document. We ran it by the planning commission. When we changed up everything, we ran it by them to see if that's what they preferred and that that went by them. So if you want us to pull it out, we can pull it out. We can leave it the same in the staff report, but also do a diagram of some sort.
We can discuss it. Okay, we want to press on? For the, or is there other questions?
Well, I got one, I got one quick question about this one particular slide while we're on it. Because um, it says the code interpretation by the town attorney says code uh, prevents the town council from amending or requiring the owner to amend the sketch plan. But it appears that the sketch plan has been amended. So what do we do with that information?
Previous to my coming here, there was an administrative determination that the sketch plan could be amended as long as the land use acreage did not change. So it could shift in location, but it couldn't change in acreage.
So if it does change in acreage, and then what?
I don't know. But the the shift that happened based on my conversations with previous staff was that the commercial went from being a linear strip along Jackson Creek Parkway to being moved to the intersection of Jackson Creek and one oh five. The acreage didn't change, but the location did.
But the acreage has changed in this last piece here, so I'm just a little confused on this statement as to what to do with it, and maybe we ask our town attorney here. And and we can get to this, we can get to this at a later point in this conversation too. I just thought maybe you might know that.
Like we let him finish the presentation and he'll be ready.
Councilmember Kimpel, did you want to ask anything now or you want to wait until after? Okay, then we'll move on.
Would you like me to continue with presenting the final plat?
Wasn't, are you? Oh, as opposed to us making a motion beforehand to and at a presentation on the.
The idea is since they're both have very similar issues, we thought we'd go ahead and get the presentation for both out of the way, and then the discussion could be on both or one after.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Second presentation is for Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West file number one. Preliminary final, sorry, final plat associated with the preliminary final PUD. Here's a screenshot of the cover page of the uh, proposed final plat. The request is for a resolution number thirty three, twenty twenty three. Resolution approving a final plat for Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West filing number one. This request is a replating of tracks A, B, and C of Monument Junction West file number one, recorded under reception number twenty two twenty seven one four nine five two, Town of Monument, El Paso County, Colorado. This includes or involves one hundred twenty nine single family lots with one four point eight acre tract for a public park. Tracks B through J are for public utilities, public drainage, open space, pedestrian access, and private streets. The following is for record, three screenshots of the three page plat. Again, this is one hundred twenty nine single family lots with one four point acre tract for a public park. Individual sheets for the record. Section eighteen oh two two sixty, final plat review approval criteria is presented here for the record. Staff's review shows that we believe it has met all criteria. On April twelfth, twenty twenty three, this was presented also to the planning commission. There was one motion and one vote. It was a unanimous recommendation of denial of the final plat. Because there was a previous voting on a final PUD. The motion was, I move that the planning commission recommend denial of the Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West file number one final plat because it fails to meet the following criteria from the Town of Monuments Land Development Code, section eighteen oh two two sixty. The Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West file number one final plat describes it as consisting of one four point acre tract for community park and drainage and one hundred twenty nine single family residence lots. This description of the plat conflicts with the planet, planning commission's related request for the council to deny the Midtown Collection PUD for one hundred twenty nine single family units, which would be located on the plat. Therefore, review and approval criteria, final plat shall comply with the following review and approval criteria. Item two, the plat proposes a harmonious development and lot pattern that is compatible with the neighborhood and community. Five, adequate, safe, and efficient public improvements, utilities, and community facilities and services will be provided with sufficient capacity to serve the subdivision. This is excerpt from draft minutes. Staff's note, all PC comments were directed at the PUD, not at the plat. The plat could not be approved without approval of the PUD. Staff's recommendation for the plat. It is consistent with the applicable development standards. It is adequately addresses the criteria for sections eighteen oh two two sixty of Title eighteen Land Development Code, and it generally consists with the comprehensive plan. Staff's recommendation is approval. Midtown Collection at Monument Jack Junction West filing number one final plat based on the findings that the proposed final plat is in conformance with review and approval criteria as outlined in the Town of Monuments Land Development Code. We're done with our presentation.
Just a quick question that, so I understand the the voting of the of the.
Just a quick question that, so I understand the, the voting of the, of the PC. So. They. Voted four, three. Against the PUD. And then the unanimous vote against the plat. Is that?
That's correct. They could not approve the plat because they did not approve the PUD. So the plat would have to be in conformance with the zoning and it no longer would be.
Okay, is there going to be a presentation from? The applicant?
Yes, we do have one.
Okay, well, then we should probably do that.
Okay.
Unless there's more questions for towns, for the staff. Okay. Ms. Barlow?
Andrea Barlow with NES representing Classic on this application. Do I have a clicker or am I saying next slide?
Next slide.
We can change your name to Debbie if you'd like.
Yeah, so it's a bit awkward here to actually see the screen, so. I would just say my presentation is focusing on the preliminary and final PUD, not so much on the plat. The plat is really just a, a, almost a. Formality after the PUD preliminary plan is approved or not approved, so. There is a, it's the criteria for the final plat are very objective as opposed to subjective, and it's really a criteria-based analysis. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on the plat. So, next slide. So you just heard the Planning Commission's decision, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about this. We've, we've got quite a lengthy presentation because we've updated our presentation to try and address. Uh, some of the Planning Commission's concerns. We tried to address them in the hearing. And I think there was some confusion in, in some of the, some of the questions that were asked and comments that were made afterwards. So we've put in a lot of extra work with this presentation to address those concerns because we do feel that we meet all the criteria. And that the basis of the Planning Commission's denial is. Not correct, because we do have an approved sketch plan and we do not believe we are materially varying from that approved sketch plan. And I'll go through that in a lot more detail. Obviously, some of the things that they noted was the benefits of the town. Those particularly that were raised were the fiscal benefits. So in the context of the town, a comprehensive plan relating to the comparative. Uh, bet, benefits of taxation from commercial and residential, so I'll talk about that. Also, the. I think a lack of understanding of what we're trying to do with the park, the park is a combined park with a stormwater detention facility. And I, we tried to explain that. So we've got some much more graphic, graphic information, which really hopes, hopefully can show how this will function as a park. Uh, so I think there was concern about the benefits of that. There was also expressed concern about whether this, the actual residential product would be of benefit to the town. And also, just generally, the. The. And, and, and understanding of how this product functions. So a little bit more information on that. Next slide. So just in case you aren't familiar with where we're located, the Monument Junction property as a whole is eighty-four acres. It straddles. Jackson Creek Parkway on the east and west. The area we're looking at now today is the area highlighted in red. Uh, various of the other parts of the property have been approved for development, and I'm going to go through that in detail. So there's a clear understanding of. When things were approved and, and what that approval entailed. And we are really the last piece of the, certainly of the residential jigsaw of this development. And there are a couple of lots that are of commercial that are still to, to come forward and the mixed-use area. Next slide. So just to recap on zoning, so up until this was rezoned in twenty twenty, this was zoned as PCD planned, planned commercial development. So this was zoned for commercial development since the eighties. And nothing happened with it. So it's been zoned for a long time prior to this, uh, without any movement on commercial. We came forward with a plan, actually in twenty fifteen initially, um, for a rezone to entirely residential. That was denied by the town. This was, when I say we, this was not classic homes. This was the prior landowner who I was acting for at the time. And that was denied. We came back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. To propose a plan that included an element of a commercial, which we discussed at length with the town manager and the planner at that time. About how, how that would look and what the components of this development would be. And that was the, what we came forward with, with the village sketch plan, and that was sort of what was approved by the town in twenty twenty. And that was the basis, next slide. For the approval of the PPD zoning, as it was then called in, in twenty twenty, planned development for a mix of residential use types. And it was always predominantly residential with supporting, supporting commercial and mixed uses and parks. Parks and open space and trails as well. So with the more recent zoning code that was adopted, I, I believe in twenty twenty-one. Uh, it was changed to a planned unit development. So that's the current zoning of the property. Next slide. So I wanted to go back to the sketch plan. Um, when it was approved. Uh, so it was approved in twenty twenty, the purposes of a sketch plan. Uh, and they really haven't changed with the old code and new code. The purpose of the sketch plan. Is to evaluate whether the proposed subdivision conforms to the comprehensive plan. And if it's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So that evaluation was made at the time the sketch plan was submitted and reviewed by planning commission. And the, the Board of Trustees at the time. And was determined that it did meet those requirements. It was compatible, it was consistent with comprehensive plan. And it compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The sketch plan is also a, a time at which any issues of concern are identified early in the review process. So if there's concerns about certain things like the mix of land uses, the proportion of residential to non-residential, that's the time those. Bigger, kind of more. Global issues need to be addressed. So the, the, the mix of land uses, the access points, things like that. That, that, that's when those matters should be addressed. The other thing to bear in mind is the sketch plan is supposed to be conceptual. So we don't have to meet it one hundred percent to the, to the dotting the I and crossing the T. It is a conceptual plan. That provides a framework for the development. And it identifies just general layouts, access, parks, open space, trails and utilities and services. And that was provided on the sketch plan with supporting documentation on, on drainage and utilities and so on. And then at the end of that, the planning commission, it, this indicates should review it and determine if it is consistent with the sketch plan. Uh, with a, with the conditions of, of the. Conformance with a comprehensive plan, compatible with surrounding neighborhood, and then recommend approval, denial or approval with conditions. Um, next slide. So I also want to highlight, going back to the previous code, what was actually the criteria that were considered at the time? Previous slide, please. Thank you. Uh, so these were the criteria that were, uh, applicable at the time for a sketch plan approval. Uh, quality functionality of open space. Relationship of the uses to surrounding areas, circulation, the trail system, any phasing. Are there adequate utilities to serve a site? Is the sketch plan, uh, acknowledging any environmental, environmentally sensitive areas, which there aren't in this property? And again, is it consistent with the town's comprehensive plan? Next slide. So this slide is an indication of the decision on the sketch plan. So at planning commission. Uh, the Commissioner LeKind, who was on the planning commission at the time, moved to approve it. And the approval was four in favor and three against. Um, Commissioner Hours, who has been very vocal in opposing, uh, the project at planning commission and wrote the motion and the. Uh, additional basis for denial, which is in your packet at page one eighty. He, at the time of the sketch plan, indicated that. There are many positives to have this change to mixed use. It's good for the community. Present homeowners would not have to look into ugly commercial buildings, et cetera. And then at the board meeting, it was a unanimous vote, six zero. And. At that time, trustee Romanello made the motion. And trustee LeKind, because there had been an election in between. And. Seconded the motion and it was approved six zero. So the, the history of this is that it was approved both by planning commission and by the Board of Trustees. Next slide. So I want to just go through a little bit more chronology of what's happened to date. Uh, since the sketch plan approved, so it was approved in June fifteenth, twenty twenty. So that's a sketch plan and was approved. You're going to see a slightly different graphic because this next graphic is, is representing how the project has evolved as we've moved through the process. So. The area outlined in purple, I had to choose purple because pretty much every other color is taken up on the plan. So I hope you can see that. So that is the Monument Junction West filing number one plat that was approved in February. Uh, twenty twenty-two. So that was the time at which all those lots on the west side were identified. And that's the time at which the discussion was had about, well, we're planning to move the commercial to the north of the property on the west side. Cause it has better access to one oh five and the highway. And just shift down the multifamily residential. Um, as a result of that, the, the mixed-use area changed shape and size. And, uh, but the area on the south side, which we're talking about today, is pretty much the same as was previously envisioned. And I'm going to talk a lot more, do a lot more of a comparison. Uh, next slide. So then we came forward with the preliminary PUD, preliminary final PUD plan for the east side. That comprised two hundred and four units and that was approved in March twenty twenty-two. Next. Immediately on the heels of that, we came in with the first filing for the final plat for part of Phase One, which was for fifty-eight units. Next slide. And then we came over to the other side. We, we, we were in front of the board in October with a, on lot four of filing one on the west side. For a Whataburger, a fast food restaurant that was approved by the board in October at the same meeting. Next slide. There was a long discussion about a multifamily product, project, which resulted in some changes, but that was. Approved for two hundred and forty units in October. And then next slide. And then the most recent approval we have is for Phase Two of the east side, which is the remaining one hundred and forty-six units. Uh, the plating of the remaining one hundred and forty-six units of the two hundred and four units on the east side. So I just wanted to clarify that because there was some confusion about what was approved when and how many residential units has been approved. And so just giving you that chronology, I hope helps to understand how, how we, how we have progressed through this project and where we are today. So everything has been approved except for, um, three of the commercial lots on the north side. The, the blue mixed-use parcel and then the green parcel, which is the park and the, on the south side, the midtown collection, which is before you today. Next slide. So I wanted to do a side-by-side comparison of the two plans. There have been changes in location of land uses, but not materially, uh, different in terms of the overall context or the concept of what we were proposing. Of a mixed-use development, including primarily residential. It's always primarily been primarily residential. With supporting commercial and mixed use, that just the location of those has changed. And the, uh, the configuration of the park on the west side has changed from a more linear park to a centralized park. And, um, and the park on the east side actually increased, almost doubled in size, so one point six acres to three point one acres. So the east side has a larger part than originally planned. But I've come to that in a lot more, uh, and, oh, I just wanted to point out on the southeast side, there is a detention pond there as well, which took out part of that. Area. So the next slide really helps to. Um, I hope come, do a comparison of what's approved and what, what we, where we're at today. So next slide, please. So on the left-hand side, I made it as big as I could, so hopefully it's legible, is a summary of everything that was approved in sketch plan. So it gives you the, the uses. And the densities, the acreages and the assumed number of units. And I want to point out here that for the mixed use, it was always assumed that about half of it would be residential. That was an assumption made in the traffic reports. It was an assumption made clearly in the project narrative. And it was an assumption that was clearly identified when we presented to the planning commission and the board. So it's always intended to be a mixed, commercial. Residential use. So of that area, about thirty-four units were assumed, um, as part of that mixed-use area. So with that, we had a total of seven hundred and forty-five maximum potential units that were approved, and that was the basis for. Uh, the master traffic study as well. So everything was assumed on that basis. We had fourteen point three acres of park, fifty-nine point three acres total of residential. And ten point four of commercial, um, commercial mixed use, but really only seven point six acres of that was solely for commercial. Then if we go over to where we are today, so we, um, we obviously have made some changes as noted. So currently we are at seven point three acres of the red area, which is the commercial. Um, we are at two acres of mixed use. So the mixed-use area has decreased, but it is about, it is pretty similar to the half of the mixed-use area previously proposed. But no residential is proposed in that area of mixed use now. It will all be a non-residential use. And as a total, we have nine point three acres, which is slightly less than the ten point four acres, uh, eighty-nine percent of that figure. But if you compare it to the seven point six acres of previously proposed non-residential, we are over that one hundred and twenty-two percent. So we do actually have more solely commercial, non-residential use in this current plan than we had with the original sketch plan. And comparatively, we are slightly less on the residential than originally planned, both in acreage. We are at fifty-four point one acres compared to fifty-nine point three, which is about ninety-one percent of the original figure. Uh, when you compare units, obviously that was the maximum number of units based on the density range at seven hundred and forty-five. Um, we have come in at acreages, sorry, densities that are kind of more in the middle of those ranges, as you can see from the gross densities that are identified there. And we're at about, well, we'll be, if this plan is approved, at five hundred and seventy-three units in total. So that includes the two hundred and forty multifamily. The one hundred and twenty-nine, that's the midtown, that's our, that's the project we're proposing today. Sixty-seven plus seventy-nine plus forty-six make up the, and twelve make up the two hundred and four on the east side. Um, so as far as number of units concerned, we're about seventy-seven percent of what the, um. Uh, original sketch plan approved. So. Um, in that context, I just want to go back to the comment that, uh, one of the basis for the planning commission's denial was that. Um, this should be predominantly mixed use, uh, non-residential mixed use. Um, I would say a couple of things to that. First of all, that's not what was approved. That was not what was approved on the sketch plan. That sketch plan was approved in the context of the very same comprehensive plan that's in place today that was quoted. It was approved with the assumption that fifty-nine acres of the, of eighty-four acre property would be residential. We are slightly less than that now. And we have switched, shifted the balance slightly in favor of the commercial. In addition, you can see we have now eighteen point five acres of open space compared to fourteen point three. So we've increased the open space in particular. As I said, we've increased the park on the east side was significantly increased. Um, and the open space generally has increased. Uh, with regard to specifically the midtown, so that's the second one down on the residential side in the yellow. Uh, the five to twelve units per acre, that was originally proposed at twelve point six acres. Our overall net and the reason I say net acreage is about ten point seven acres because. As you probably saw, and can we go back a slide, please? The sketch plan called out all these, all the open space corridors and parks separately. Um, these are incorporated into our. PUD plans, development plans for the development, but the net area. So the net area of that midtown development is about ten point seven acres compared to twelve point six, which was previously proposed. So it is actually less than was pre previously proposed on a net basis. Because the the sketch plan called out separately the open space um corridors, buffers around the edge and so on, all of which are incorporated into our current project. Next slide. And I think with that, um I I have covered everything I really wanted to show on that slide, really the 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 resulting um. Uh concluding comment is that we we have increased commercial, we have reduced slightly residential. And we have increased open space. Next slide. So now I want to talk, in providing that context, I want to talk a little bit more about the project itself. So as as noted, we we uh obtained approval for the uh plat. On the west side in March twenty twenty two. And that identified various lots, one through six, but it also identified tracks A, B and C. Tract C was identified for future development, sixteen point nine acres. Tract B is a small director's parcel, which is going to be incorporated into this plan, that's just needed for setting up the metropolitan district. And uh then the four point seven eight eight acre tract A was identified for a park and detention. So we're focusing on today is the track, the replat, the the P U D uh final preliminary P U D. And a replata of those parcels to create the midtown project. Next slide. So here's a little bit of information about uh midtown. Um it's a single family residential, they are all detached. Um they uh we have a total of twenty one acres, twenty one point seven acres in this entire project. Um and a hundred and twenty nine units. Uh that gives us a five point nine five gross density, but to be fair, we have the tract for the park in there, which is. Just around four point acre, eight acres, and if you take that out and look at the the residential area per se, it is at seven point six units per acre, which is. Right in the middle of that five to tw- on the lower end of the five to twelve units per acre that was permitted in the sketch plan. Uh parking uh is required at two spaces per dwelling units in a garage or on a driveway, that's what the code says for parking. We are actually providing two garage spaces per unit and and two spaces on the driveways in addition to. A hundred and twenty five dedicated um guest parking spaces. Circulation is provided by public and private streets, so you have a slope side um street which is coming in off of um Jackson Creek Parkway to that cul-de-sac. Um there is parking alongside uh the road to service the park, I'll look, we'll look at that in a bit more detail later. And then there is a a road that's uh sweeps down to the south, accessing Jackson Creek Parkway, which is a public street. And then in between that, there are a variety of private streets or alleys. These will all be alley loaded products, so they will be getting their access from the rear garage. I've got some photographs which will help to explain that. Um I think this was one of the aspects that um the planning commission struggled to uh picture. So we provided some uh photographs of other developments which have a similar, which are the same products and a similar layout. To help understand that. Next slide. So going into this, this is a project uh in uh Hannah Ridge in the county. So this is an example of where the uh homes front the street, so they have a small yard area. Uh they front the street and then you can see on the side how they access the garages off the alley. Um so there are a variety of different architectural styles. And I think the important thing to note here is that in in this, uh if you can, if you can go back one slide. There are a variety of uh different orientations of the building, so some of them are open to green space. Some are facing the street, we think that provides a better aspect to the street as you're driving through the developments. Um and along Jackson Creek Parkway, they will be, some some units will be side on, some will face Jackson Creek with with a setback and. And uh landscaping that uh is, it provides a better viewpoint, a visual. Um than looking at the back of properties and garages, so it will provide an attractive street. And then there's some that face um internally to green space and you can see in the middle there, there is an area of um. Park that is provided for the uh primarily for the residents. We do have sidewalk connections all the way, all the fronts of the units are accessed by sidewalks. That provides a loop around the development, there is also a trail proposed. Along the western side of the park as well, which will connect to the trail that's proposed to the north in the apartment development. So there are trails throughout this development, collecting through the open space areas and to the front doors of the homes. Uh next slide. So they do have kind of a little front yard area that is owned and maintained by the homeowner, the rest of the, or all the rest of the tracks and open space. Landscaping is to be owned and maintained by the metropolitan district. Uh next slide. So this shows a a different development at the farm and so you can see how the the front yards are zero scape. So uh low maintenance, that's one of the attractions of this type of product. Uh people don't want uh big yards, um they don't want the maintenance of an external uh. Yard or grassed area, so they have the benefit, next slide. Of having the uh grassed area and the amenities that uh maintained by the metropolitan district. So it's very low maintenance living, it is a very attractive option for empty nesters and also young professionals. Um looking for a more affordable option, which I'll talk about a little later. Next slide. Couple more showing just uh different aspects, you can see how the, again, variation in architecture, it is a modern, more modern architecture, but there is a variety, next slide. And just showing how they have different levels as well, some are two stories, some are single story. And so there is a a quite a good a variation in architectural style. Next slide. Just some interior shots, just to show that these are good quality products and uh very much in demand. Next slide. And you can see the open space out there from the balcony area, um next slide. And that's a living area. Next slide. So I talked earlier about how the sketch plan and the principle of the uses as a whole. And the mix of uses has already been established with the sketch plan as being compliant with the comprehensive plan, same comprehensive plan. It was adopted in twenty seventeen, nothing has changed since. I just wanted to focus, so that's what really what the first two bullets say, it's part of the overall mixed use that was approved. As uh the mixed use, the mix of uses in the sketch plan is consistent with the uh comprehensive plan as determined by the previous decision. Uh the midtown collection is part of that mix and is providing a medium density, uh single family detached product in in terms of that overall mix. Uh there are specific attributes identified in the comprehensive plan for single family detached, which I thought I'd go through. Some of them to indicate how we feel we we meet those. So a mix of compatibly designed, single family detached houses with appropriate landscaping and usable open space within each neighborhood. Um if you think of the Monument Junction uh project as a whole, we have a huge range of different types of densities from larger lots to. Uh ones that are grouped in fours called the four square, to duplexes, to um to the midtown. So a lot of different um types of residential, all with landscaping and their own open space areas. Uh maintain the small town character, um areas designated as a single family should provide a mix of densities. Allowing a transition between existing large lots subdivisions and homes and smaller lots. That's exactly what we did with the sketch plan, I didn't really go through that earlier, but we grew, we gradually um. Went from a low density on the east side and the south. To higher density, to higher density, and then came across Jackson Creek to higher density. So we purposely respected the lower density uh adjacent residential to the south, which is actually county. Um and it kind of wraps around the south um east corner and then all the way up the east side. Uh with the village center uh development, which got progressively more dense as it went north. So we respected that in the context of the overall uh uh Monument Junction project. And this ma- midtown collection is part of that. Uh it's connected by sidewalks and trails, I indicated that um throughout the development it is, but particularly in the midtown um development. Um all all the fronts of the units will be served by sidewalks. Community amenities are encouraged, we obviously are providing a park in this development, I'll uh go into a little bit more detail on that. Um harmonious variations in facade elevations and types of houses to avoid cookie cut, cookie cutter subdivisions. We think we're achieving that, there isn't uh one facade doesn't look like the the neighbor. There's variation in heights, variation in design, so we believe we're uh achieving that objective of the comprehensive plan. And then lots should be of sufficient size to allow for off street parking and landscaping, as demonstrated. The each lot will have two car garage, two car driveway, and they will have a front yard area for landscaping on their lots. Next slide. So one of the reasons for denial was um a suggested lack of benefit to the town. Um so there's a couple of things I wanted to talk about, so that that was particularly referenced by Commissioner Green, Commissioner Green. Um uh her comments related more to uh not understanding how the park would function as a park rather than as a detention pond, so I'm going to address that. And then um Mister Hours, um uh Commissioner Hours's uh comments regarding the fiscal benefits and and so on, so we'll talk a little bit about that. But I first want to talk about uh what the purpose of a P U D is, there are multiple purposes, um some of them relate to um. Uh preserving area, uh natural features, um there are really no natural features on that this site, so. I didn't include those, but these are the ones which I felt were pertinent. And they are about using the the land efficiently, um creatively, with flexibility. Um providing uh compatibility with um adjacent neighborhoods. Uh combining and coordinating architectural styles, uh improving design, character and quality of new developments. Uh promoting beneficial and economic use of land in a physical and economic development, in the physical and economic development of monument. And providing for necessary commercial, recreation, employment and education facilities conveniently located to housing. So we feel we're we're achieving all of those objectives. I would, I would just comment on the the penultimate one, promote beneficial and economic use of land. That is a a a purpose, but I would say that I think there's. Uh a misinterpretation in in suggesting that that the P, you you can get a P U D. With the trade off of a benefit to the town, it's just one of the purposes of a P U D. We do believe there are benefits and um criteria number five um actually specifically talks to uh what. Is there a benefit and it references there the variety of development to fill a need and amenities for the benefit of the town residents. So next few slides are just going to be talking about some of those benefits and addressing. Hopefully some of the concerns regarding those benefits that were addressed by planning commission. Next slide. So the first one is increasing the variety of development to fill a need. So I think when you look at the benefits of this project, you 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 do really need to look at the entire Monument Junction project, it's hard to kind of. Isolate individual portions of it in that regard, so you need to look at the whole thing. And it provides overall a mix of residential, so we've got a number of different types of residential within that mix. Commercial with supporting uh commercial and mixed use and then supporting parks and open space and trails. Um and that, all all that, when you bring that all together, it creates a vital and viable project which will. Generate multiple benefits to the town, I'm going to hit on some of those. Obviously, with the different range of residential, you're getting different price points, which is really important um to um. Uh attract um new home buyers, uh make it affordable for new home buyers at price points that are lower than the average. So a lot of um criticism was pushed at as the planning commission that these are not affordable. Uh we're not promoting them as affordable housing, affordable has a very def definite definition with the. Um with HUD and uh in terms of representing a proportion of income, it's usually subsidized. But we are offering a product here that is more affordable than the average, which is around seven hundred, it was up at about eight hundred and thirty thousand in monument, I think it's around. Seven fifty, seven eighty now in monuments, so these are kind of coming a much, much less than that and a much more affordable hu- project, product. And meeting a need that is uh definitely out there, as I most mentioned before, this type of product. Particularly attractive to empty, empty nesters and young professionals. Um i- in the town, currently in the town and in the surrounding area. Next slide. So let's talk about the fiscal benefits, so um it was suggested in the um motion. That the there was no fiscal benefit to this development because it was residential uh and not commercial. And that was really the motivation for the suggestion of changing it to commercial, mending the sketch plan and changing it to commercial. Um that was based on a uh a direct reference to the uh comprehensive plan. So uh the comprehensive plan makes reference to the fact that non residential development um uh achieves higher property tax, also gets sales tax. Um and that residential doesn't provide any of those benefits, has a lot, a lot less property tax and it doesn't generate any sales tax. So that was back in that, that comprehensive plan was ba- written back in twenty seventeen. In twenty eighteen, um the Supreme Court passed a law that allowed local jurisdictions to collect taxes for. Uh internet sales, online sales. That has had a significant, significant change in the basis of sales tax accrual for all towns and cities. So there were estimates pre covid that it could be up to twenty five percent of all sales. Um I I understand now that that figure has increased dramatically since then because of covid, everybody got used to buying online sales. So I think it it, you're selling residential short if you do not think there will be a generation of sales tax from residential development, there will be significant. Sales tax generation, plus people who live there. A new residential will go and use the existing services and retail and what have you in the town and help boost their sales tax as well. The other aspect was. Uh the suggestion that this should be cha- changed to commercial. Really i- ignores the fact that um we we've gone through a process here, we had, uh this site was zoned for commercial for forty years. Plus fifty years until it was rezoned without any interest in developing it for commercial. It's not a viable location for that much commercial. Um in fact, that while we have four parcels at ours uh identified for commercial, there is, it it's proven difficult to get interest in a couple of the. Remaining, the two remaining lots. Uh the most important thing that um uh. New commercial developers say when they come to an area is that they need rooftops, they need more people. They need, there's not enough people in monument to attract the commercial that monument aspires to, to quite frank. And I'm going to have some more slides on that. Uh next slide. So this is just an analysis, simple analysis of, um I've worked on many of these projects, very familiar with them. So numbered them there, show you where they are on the on the map, they're all areas that are zoned. Either purely commercial or part of a P U D and identified as commercial. There are various different acreages there, um you know, we have the, there's a parcel on Second Street and Beacon Light, uh which has been zoned for commercial for years. There's parts of Conexus, uh phases one, two and three, which are identified for commercial Santa Fe Park. Uh there's an area identified purely as commercial, which is about seven point six acres, the remaining forty seven acres is. Identified as industrial or commercial, and there has been some commercial interest in that parcel, nothing's come forward yet, but. We're hopeful and there's a small parcel next to Valero that's zoned commercial, there's forty seven acres at Falcon Commerce uh Commerce Center. Uh the whole area on the northeast side of Baptist Road up to uh Monument Marketplace is zoned for commercial. And then you have parcels north, you have parcels at uh Jackson Creek and Higby. And then you have a couple of parcels either side of the Y M C A, which is zoned commercial, so that totals. Um two hundred and eighty nine point seven acres. And based on that, if you apply a very standard floor area ratio of point two five, which is, which is a standard ratio. Um that gives you approximately three point one five million square feet of available commercial land in the town. The absorption rate per a sub, a semi economics study that was done actually in con- context of the sketch plan approval. Indicates that the, indicated that time that the absorption rate of commercial was about three point four acres a year. That means you have about eighty five years of supply of commercial land in in the town. Um that's been changed, that's been reduced because a lot of those former industrial slash commercial areas have been rezoned to accommodate some residential or other uses. Um needed to support all that commercial. Um even if you generously assume uh that that will increase, increase to five acres a year. Um even if you generously assume uh that that will increase increase to five acres a year, um then you're at about fifty-nine years' supply. So under normal market conditions, the build-out of the residential at Monument Junction would take about five years, probably be done in twenty twenty-eight, slowed down a bit now, so maybe it could take, maybe it could take seven years, eight years. The point is, you're going to, the town is going to achieve fiscal benefits from this development, this project, Monument Junction much sooner and for a much longer period, which accumulates um than it would for any commercial um if it were rezoned or changed to be commercial. So I just want you to bear that in mind, that the there are real fiscal benefits from residential development, both on this site and elsewhere in the town. And the more residential you you approve, the more likely you will get the commercial that you want. Next slide. And this is just a a a snapshot of today, information that was pulled from uh a commercial land supply analysis. There are currently forty-five commercial spaces, and you can see from the square footages, these are relatively small spaces. But they're currently available in Monument, and twenty-four of these are at Monument Marketplace. Your prime uh retail area, I would say, other than your downtown, is struggling to fill its space today. Next slide. So moving on, benefits, other benefits. Well, there are road improvements that have been proposed. You've just had a presentation um about the uh road improvements. Classic are contributing four point one million to those road improvements. That's about eighteen percent of the overall project, twenty-three million dollar uh uh twenty-three million dollar project. And that is based on the estimated impact based on the original sketch plan. So the master of traffic impact study based on the original sketch plan assumed a certain level of traffic. As you can see from the analysis I provided earlier, are actually uh fairly substantially less than that in terms of the number of residential units. But they are propose proposing that four point one million of uh improvements, together with the interim improvements that were mentioned of about one point three million. So there are significant road improvement benefits. And and the the problems that exist at the Monument, sorry, the um Jackson Creek Parkway and and one oh five intersection, that they're there today irrespective of this development. The difficulty from turning on to, from Jackson Creek onto one oh five, turning left. This development will provide additional turn lanes to do that. The the problems you face when you're going east on one oh five, wanting to turn south on Jackson Creek Parkway, there's no turn lane. You get stuck behind people who want to go straight. That will be rectified with this project. Those problems exist today. Um yes, will this development bring additional traffic? It will, but this 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 development will um generate the uh impetus to uh improve that intersection and clearly the impetus to improve the entirety of Jackson Creek Parkway as proposed. Next slide. So uh the the one area that I want to focus a little bit on now is the park. Um so we're proposing a four-point-eight acre park, which also is going to be a stormwater detention facility. That's, this is a concept that has been done elsewhere in the county. It is, it's done elsewhere in the country on a regular basis. It's very, it's a very uh becoming a very common theme of making better use of a detention pond. A detention pond just sits there, occasionally gets water in when it rains occasionally in Colorado. And and for the rest of the time, it's it's just not functioning i- to the benefit of the community. So Classic decided that, well, what we we know there's a a a demand or a need for a park on the east side of the highway. It's been mentioned many times, it was mentioned at the sketch plan um hearing as well. Um so we are proposing a park that will be functional. It will provide a sports field, it will have um tiered seating, it will have a play area, it will have associated parking. Um there was one uh criticism placed uh on us at Planning Commission that, well, if you live on the east side of Monument Junction, you do not um you you don't have good access to this park. Now, this park is meant to be more of a, it's not just a park for commu- uh for Monument Junction, it's a community park. It's intended to serve the entire community of monuments, particularly on the east side. Um so there are parking spaces there, we anticipate that people will drive there. If people from the east side want to come over to this park, they they with the Jackson Creek Parkway improvements, there are going to be new bike lanes, there are going to be new sidewalks. There will be a signalized intersection uh on the north side of Fat Tire, potentially an additional signalized intersection on Slope Side, which is the street that comes into Midtown. And that's only if it's going to be warranted. And in addition to that, as I noted earlier, the east side has their own park. They have a three point one acre park with play areas. So they have their own amenities. It's not like they have to come over here, over to the west side to utilize the park. Um so we will be providing, as I say, a park which we we think is uh is going to be really good benefit to the community. So I'm going to have a few slides here where we've got some images and I'll just talk through those next slide. So this is just a blow-up of the graphic. And what what we did here was, we actually put in the um the uh four bays, which is where on the north and south on the on the west side. So the lines that are on this on the plan, can't really point to them, uh are where the stormwater is going to come in from the south, so everything's going to drain here. So uh so that it enters on the south, enters in the north, and then where it kind of goes into the middle towards the highway, that's where the outflow is. So all the structures for the detention pond function are on the west side of this area. It's five acres, and I just, I I want you to think about the images you you saw of the uh units, that the photographs I showed of the units, and look at the plan and identify one of those units, one of those little rectangles there, to get an idea of the scale of this park. It's five acres, it's a big area. We can get a full-sized field on there. And as I noticed, you can see on the um east side and kind of wrapping around the southeast corner, there are a series of terrace retaining walls, they're there to create the pond. But they are also, they've also been designed specifically to create seating for for people to watch a ballgame or 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 other events. Could be used like a mini amphitheater as well. Uh and then in that southeast corner adjacent to the road, there is a play area, park, um seating and so on. Next slide. So we tried to do some, a little bit of modeling to show you how this could look. So you can see with the red and in the diagram at the side where it's taken from. So just kind of looking across the area to the north. There is no development around it for context. We 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 didn't really have time to to put all that in, but um we are just looking in the northerly direction, next slide. And then here, just kind of looking more towards the mountains in the nor- in the northwest. Uh next slide. This is uh more from the middle of the site towards the southwest, looking at the mountains. You see the YMCA there in the background. Next slide. This one is kind of get, trying to give you a visual of how that terrace seating will work with steps coming down. You can just see in the distance there, the play area on the corner, next slide. And then here's a little bit of a better close-up of the seating area, which is going to kind of be in this depressed area. And then um the uh play, the actual playground area. And as I noted earlier, there will be parking alongside the street for for people to park conveniently for the park. Next slide. So I am at my summary now, I'm at the end. So I'm just going to go through the criteria very briefly to just summarize, because there's a few criteria here that we that really weren't touched on in the main presentation, because they weren't really the basis for the planning commission's denial. Um but I will go through all the criteria just to uh gi- give some perspective of of what our response is to them. So obviously, talked endlessly about the comprehensive plan compliance. We believe we are uh compliant with the comprehensive plan and that the sketch plan was based on compliance with the comprehensive plan. Uh includes quality and functional open space, parks and trails. We are providing a public park in Track A. We are providing a a smaller park for the residents, trails connecting it and so on. Um it provides a benefit, we we believe firmly it provides a benefit, particularly in the context of the criteria. It provides a ver- variety of development, and it provides a needed park amenity on the east side of the highway in addition to the noted fiscal benefits, the road improvements and so on. Uh it's an integral part of the overall P U D for Monument Junction, uh in which a variety of housing type, style and density is integrated into a mixed-use development. That's one of the requirements of a P U D, that you have a variety of housing. Circulation is uh appropriate for the development, the lot access is off of private alleys. Um we are providing access uh via sidewalks and so on, uh bicycles. Um obviously, there will be bike lanes along the improved and widened Jackson Creek Parkway. It fits into the context of the surrounding because it's part of the, is a planned component of Monument Junction. And uh the proposed improvements to the roadway and utility systems of will all be extended to support the development. You you heard about the Jackson Creek Parkway improvements from the previous presenter, and we're providing an integral part of that. Uh the building design, we think it's a quality architecture, it's got some variety, it will be compatible with the surrounding area. Bear in mind that the surrounding area to this development, to the north is apartments and beyond that is commercial, there's mixed use. And to the south, um directly to the south is a commercial parcel, and then you have the YMCA. So having that more modern um architecture, we consider to be appropriate in the setting, in the kind of in in the setting that it has, which is uh um not the same as on the east side, which was uh more consistent with uh traditional single-family to the east. And then uh the uh landscaping, obviously, we we're providing a a very well landscaped area, which will be maintained by the metro district. And then uh the parking, as noted, we have adequate parking, more than adequate parking, not only for residence needs, but also for guests. And with that, next slide, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, um thank you, Ms. Marlowe. Where's the council at? Yes?
Yes.
Council members have questions? Okay.
Um can you go back to the very first slide, please? Whoever's running the side deck. Okay. This slide, to me personally, does not make sense because the second part, motion to Commissioner Hours made a motion to deny the preliminary final P U D. Commissioner Trujillo seconded the motion. But then it says down below, the motion passed four to three.
Yeah. The motion to deny passed.
Denied.
Denied, passed four to three.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's a, that's a direct copy from the draft minutes that were in the staff's report. Presentation.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, thank you. Um secondly, the presentation that was done before yours said no significant wildlife habitats are impacted.
Yes.
What does that mean? How significant is significant?
Well, there are no wildlife habitats on the property, so there there is no, there are no significant, so it's zero. There's no significant impacts.
Okay. And then um
And and just, just as an FYI, that was a, that was analyzed in the sketch plan with a detailed report. Um and so that that the wildlife aspect of it and the significant natural features was all analyzed with sketch plan.
Okay. And then the, you said it was less than seven fifty K, what are you anticipating?
Uh we, I think it was about five, something low fives. That was low to mid five hundreds.
For a townhome.
It's it's a single-family detached, it's not, it's not a townhome.
It's a square footage.
Sorry?
Square footage.
Uh twenty-one? Uh thirteen to twenty-two, thirteen hundred to twenty-two, they are smaller homes.
And lastly, um when everyone's done with their questions, um I would like to hear from Commissioner Hours himself and see what what the basis was. I saw his comments, but I'd like to hear it from him as to why he opposed this. If if anyone else, if any of the other commissioners would like to say something as well, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you asking that they, well, it's really up to them to decide if they want to make up public comment.
If they would like, I would just like to hear from them if they're here or online.
Will they, they'll be able to speak up during public comment? They won't be given special, a special part of this unless they want to become part of it.
That works, thanks.
Okay. Um any other questions? Okay. Fight it out.
Okay, we're gonna do ladies first. Um what is the approximate estimate of what what the HOA fees are going to be?
There, there is no HOA, correct?
Well, you've got a, you've got a uh
It's a metropolitan district.
Right. And they're going to be To that, correct?
There's a mill levy.
Okay. What's the approximate value of the district?
That I'll have to defer to the applicants.
Well, the service, just if I can clarify, since the service plan was approved for sixty mils.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so
Up to or at?
Sixty mils.
Up to?
Six, right, sixty mils. So we'll have to wait to see what happens with you know.
Yeah.
See if the assessment rates, obviously, assessment rates are going to change, but it'll be formulated into the sixty mils.
Okay, I um I have, I'm having a con- a conceptual problem. When we talk about a sketch plan and we say that the sketch plan is conceptual, and then we try to pin things down as being approved in the sketch plan, I get confused. Is is that, does anybody else have that issue?
So that you're 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 having to so between sketch plan and the what the 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 final P U D or the P U D?
What, yes and no. Sketch plan being conceptual, all right? Okay, if it's conceptual, then they can change.
Yep.
We can change.
The sort, well, sort of, um it depends, the the classic answer.
Oh, I love that.
So at, when it's presented as a sketch plan, correct me, that's before approval, that's where you kind of hash out the details. Once it's approved as a sketch plan, it's liquid jello, in in the sense that you you've poured it, it it it's gonna, it's gonna firm up a- as as they, as the developer figures out the form of the liquid jello, that's where the the P U D and and the and the plat comes into fruition. But your box of jello is is what you what you approved, is the sketch plan.
And there's my, there's my issue, okay? When you say something is not materially, does not materially deviate from the sketch plan, and then you ask somebody to approve the jello.
Hey, hang on.
Yeah.
Go ahead. If we would like a legal definition, I would suggest we ask the town attorney um and the planning director.
Okay.
Well, you know, I would like to just start with the, there are different levels of sketch plans. Your sketch plan in any town can be seen as a different thing. So our sketch plan in this code is completely different than what the sketch plan was in the previous code. The sketch plan in this code is tied to subdivisions, sketch plan before was tied to the zoning. So it really depends on what your code says about that sketch plan, which is why there was that special section in our new code that tied to, if you were a P D sketch plan prior to plating, then you have a, you have a different entitlement than a sketch plan approved under this code. And then I'll let him take it from there. But I just want to differentiate, the the sketch plan we're talking about with theirs was under the old code, which was a different animal, different process than the sketch plan we have now, which is a subdivision.
Clear as mud.
So in essence, the sketch plan was the old, was under P D, but it, the sketch plan, did it evolve as it it evolved from P D to P U D? Or no, or it stayed at P D?
I believe it stayed, because it was a P D sketch plan and it was adopted by ordinance, it's more like a P U D than a sketch plan.
Okay.
Is the way I look at it. And I could be wrong, but that's the way it, that's kind of how I've looked at it in my mind, based on how it was approved and the language I read.
You want to add something, Mr. Stimple?
Mr. Mayor. Um one, one thing that I'd like to point out, my name's Doug Stimple, I'm the CEO of Classic Homes. The way I look at a sketch plan is, what you're approving is you're approving land uses and you're approving density ranges. So for example, on this parcel, it approved a certain amount of residential between five and twelve units to the acre. That's notionally where it is. But we didn't show exactly what size lot, how the streets would lay out, how the utilities would serve it. As you further that, we bring it back. And yes, it is still consistent with the sketch plan because we're right in the middle of that density range, and we're still proposing the same use. So it, I don't think it's So it, I don't think it's quite as squishy, uh, because, because if we had proposed fourteen units to the acre, we would be outside that range. And so I think all we're doing is as you get further and further along, and please understand, when you buy a piece of ground like this, you're buying based on anticipated use, density and zoning. And it takes a lot of time and money to get to the point where you can show the detailed site plan that Ms. Barlow just took us through. So that's just the logical progression of the way it works out, but it's not like you take a ham sandwich and turn it into a steak. It's, you, you stay within that range and you keep within those, within the use that's allowable in your sketch plan. Does that make sense?
It all makes some sense, but still it's kind of, it's still squishy to me, for me.
Okay. Is there other questions for the applicant? That, that's, this is the time that we ask questions of the applicant. Is there any other questions for the applicant?
I do. Yeah. Um, so it, in a, in a larger context, um, and, and I think you alluded to this, uh, Ms. Barlowe?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, you alluded to this, um, through, at, at certain points of, of your, uh, presentation. There, there's a, a, a general vision. I, I, I take it of these individual parcels. Thank, yeah, that, that one. There's a general vision-ish. And how does, how does this plat, this ordinance fit into, into this vision? And how do you see it fitting into that commercial that you mentioned south? Um, and, and the, the rest of the, of, of the development with, along Jackson Creek Parkway? How do you see that? That vision from, from your perspective?
So obviously that, our starting point for this was that it was zoned mix, uh, sorry, identified in the comprehensive plan as mixed use. And, uh, so we, we proposed a, a, a development that had a range of mix of, of uses, but also looking at what other uses were in the area.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, obviously to the east, it's very much a single family residential uh, neighborhoods and to the southeast, it's higher, um, sorry, larger lots, single family residential. And then on, on the south side, southeast side, um, we, southwest side, rather, we have a commercial going into the, uh, we don't, we're not sure what that, uh, is going to be developed as. I hear different things, but, um, uh, but going into the YMCA, so just kind of lower key uh, commercial type uses. And so we were proposing, uh, uh, try to propose a range of residential development that could, uh, complement each other, um, not all be the same, uh, uh, type of residential, which is what you see, uh, a lot of other places in, in, in the county period, um, and also in Monument area. So trying to get that variety of residential and also providing some supporting commercial. I mean, um, uh, obviously when we came forward, we were not, we were wanting to change from the entire property being commercial. Um, that was a very definite and, uh, direct approach, which, um, we made no bones about. There, there was no way this, this site could support eighty-four acres of commercial. So we provided a more limited range of commercial that was going to hopefully support the existing residential in the wider area and also provide some services for the residents of this property and also with the mixed use possibly bringing some services as well. So that was the overall vision, that not only was it mixed use, um, i- in its, in its own rights, but also that it was mixed use, uh, blending with the mix of uses that are in the area already, which changes from, like I say, single family to more commercial. And then as you go over on one oh five as well, is more commercial.
Thank you. Um, so I was on the comprehensive plan team group, what, what have you. Um, still can't believe it's twenty seventeen now. Um, when we were briefed on the debt, the different, the varying definitions of mixed use, um, one of the things that, that was brought up was, um, having commercial on, on the ground floor essentially, um, and then residential on, on the second floor. What, was there any, um, discussion towards that and, and was why didn't this parcel support that? Or why doesn't the, let's call it the environment, support something like to, to that end?
That's a good question. Um, so that we would call that vertical mixed use as opposed to horizontal mixed use. So we're, we're doing horizontal mixed use here primarily. And vertical mixed use tends to be focused more in the downtown areas where it can support that mix of, um, or, or much higher density areas. So for example, the only other place outside of, uh, downtown that I could think that is doing vertical mixed use is Victory Ridge in, in Colorado Springs, uh, which is just off into west where they're, they're doing some higher density, um, uh, create, almost creating a town center there. So where you get the higher density. So really, there's nothing in Monument that's of that type of density. And also we, we refer to the de- definition of mixed use that's in the code. And that doesn't require that vertical mixed use. It just says that as long as it's planned as a, 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 a development unit, as you know, as an entire development, which this has been, uh, then it qualifies as mixed use.
So, um, thank you. Um, and then last question. In terms of trail and road maintenance, I'm assuming the metro district will be responsible. Is it the town of Monument?
So, uh, that, both, um, di- different answers to that. So all the trails and the open space and the landscaping, other than the small area of landscaping that's at the front of the lots will be owned and maintained by the metro district. The private streets, so the alleys that serve the back of the lots will be owned and maintained by the metro districts. The pub, public streets that go through the development will be dedicated to the town and will be owned and maintained by the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do have a couple more questions, but they're more for town staff.
Okay, um, that was a good question on the vertical mixed use. I actually hadn't considered that, but that was pretty cool.
It, you, I, I, I experienced it most in Europe, uh, born and raised in Italy, so that, that's very popular because you, you essentially you get, you get that double use. Um, but I, I think it would be kind of neat, but.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Kimpel.
Evening. Thank you for the presentation, by the way. Very detailed.
Yes, thank you for that.
Um, so some questions, um, that came up when I read the packet over the weekend and, um, so we're talking about a hundred and twenty-nine homes. And what was stated was the traffic reflected four hundred and twenty-three trips a day out of the, from the hundred and twenty-nine homes.
Yes, the, the standard, um, that, that was in the traffic study or is that was in the, that was at the peak hour? Is that from the staff's presentation?
That's from your presentation.
I don't think my presentation references any
No, it was in the staff's.
Staff, okay.
It's like it was probably peak hour.
Yeah, so it's peak hour and that is from our presentation that we pulled from the, the traffic report.
Okay, so that, that comes down to roughly three point two trips per home a day.
No, that, that's just in the peak hour. So generally speaking, from a single family residential home, there's a, that the, the rule of thumb, it's slightly diff, it's slightly different, but it's about ten trips per day.
Yeah.
And so that's just in the peak hour. So that would, was the morning peak?
So there's a breakdown of, I'd have to go to our presentation, but it's a breakdown of AM peak and PM peak. And it's also then broken down by all the three different intersections.
But in, but in your presentation, it's just specifically says four hundred and twenty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a, that was a general slide to give you some three, three points of high level that had to do with traffic. The following slide right after that gives you a breakdown on the individual lots. Actually, it might be two slides later. It's the LOS slides.
Well, yeah, I, I saw the letter. I saw the, yeah, the LOS. I saw those in there and the, um, so let me, let me keep driving this, this train. Um, what is the current? What is Jackson Creek considered right now? What, what is? What's it designated as? Is it a minor collector?
Steve, is it a minor? What is our classification on this one? We kind of created one just to fit within the boundaries of it.
I, I think that's what it's but is it currently a minor collector? Or is it proposed? Is it the question, what, what is it currently?
Yes. I don't.
If it's a minor, if it's considered a minor collector right now, according to the definition, thirty-five hundred vehicles a day. And after that, you have to come up with a plan to mitigate that, which I think is what we're doing by extending it. So now my question becomes if it, if it's now going to be defined as a major collector, after the four lanes are put in with the median, because there's a depth, there's a definition in the town instruction about that, um, let alone the El Paso County instructions, uh, which is what the town is taken from. Um, then you have ten thousand trips a day. And then after that, you now have to mitigate for that ten thousand trips. So what I'm wondering is, when was the traffic study done? On what days? For this, because also read from the town manual, from town instructions, that if you're going to develop, that's, uh, any type of development that's going to increase by a hundred trips, you have to do another traffic study. You can't piggyback on an old one. So I'm just trying to get clarification of when that traffic study was done and what the current numbers are, because you have to provide the current number, the numbers projected during the construction, and then the final numbers after build out is complete. So I'm just wondering, I'm wondering that information.
Okay, can I comment on that? Um, I'm not sure who is, whether it's a question to me or to staff, but.
It's gonna, it's a question to staff, but I'm gonna come back to.
But I, I would just comment that the whole Jackson Creek Parkway project has been studied and reviewed and there's all sorts of traffic studies that FHU have been undertaken together with other consultants such as Kimmy Horn on the other sections of road. So our traffic study has somewhat been surpassed by, um, other work that has gone on to, uh, to analyze what's needed for Jackson Creek. And the presentation that you had earlier was identifying what the future improvements for Jackson Creek are, uh, that will be required up to the standards that will be required to accommodate not only this development, existing traffic on the road and future growth in the area generally.
Because I'm also worried about, obviously, the site distance requirements, horizontal, vertical requirements, the intersection spacing, uh, speed change or acceleration lanes, because you're gonna have to have a right turn only. So you're gonna have to have an acceleration lane.
All, all the deceleration lanes and acceleration lanes have been accounted for in the final design. And the interim improvements that have been proposed also include, uh, those intersection improvements to provide those turn lanes. But that is all part of the overall Jackson Creek Parkway analysis, um, in terms of your horizontal alignment, your vertical alignment, uh, your distances from your, your intersection spacing, the, it's, it's all part of that project.
So
can I, I want, because I have a question pertaining to this, the traffic study. Wasn't in the packet in its entirety. It's been asked before previous boards. We've asked where the traffic studies are. Is, is it, huh? Um, was it even in the board docs anywhere, the entire traffic study?
It should be. We put all of those documents on documents on demand. Again, this is one we've taken over from Jacob, so I'm going back through to see if it's in the files they have online. That's what I'm looking for now.
It probably wouldn't be a bad idea for there to be links in the packet. If, if it's not going to be included, a hyperlink specifically to the board doc, so it's not difficult to find in the,
Didn't see them.
Um, but, but I've got a question in the, under the traffic warrants. Did you get to that? Can I piggy, piggyback on what you were?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm, go ahead though. I'll come back to mine.
I, I just, I guess what I was wondering about in the design, in, well, I don't, and I don't know if it's in your section, but the intersections, there's intersections in the section of, uh, road you're doing, correct? Um, who's funding, who's funding these, uh, after the fact, right? So if there's no warrants to, to, to create the traffic circles or lights today, is the funding being put into place to deal with them later when it does happen? Or is this gonna fall on the town or a different developer or?
Fall on the town.
Yeah, I, I mean,
Typically it'd fall on the town.
So when the warrants hit, we're gonna have to have that money already put aside.
That's why you have sales tax, property tax and everything like that.
Not aside today, but I mean, we're not doing anything about it today, knowing that the warrants are, we're gonna, when they build out, people will move in and then we have to wait and do those reconstructions of the road after the fact.
So, but the Jackson, but the Parkway is not approved yet.
Right.
Be completed.
Yeah, I get it.
Or almost eight hundred million or eight million dollars short for it.
Yeah, I, I, I get it. It's, it, yeah, it's not, it's not the developments so fault. It's, we don't have the funding for the, for the Parkway.
I, I bring up, I bring up the reason about the, uh, the roadways and stuff because again, you're gonna, I'm gonna beat the drum. I'm concerned about accessibility and safety. So in the event of an evacuation, not only an evacuation, but also access for emergency vehicles to get in to respond to a house fire or something else. Um, but God forbid if there's a evacuation, now everyone, all this entire development, everyone is now going to bombard Jackson Creek Parkway along with everything else that is south of, I'm sorry, yeah, south of Higbee or coming down Higbee and have to go left or right. Um, because there's only two arteries to get to twenty-five. Baptist and one oh five. So, um, that's part of my concern about, um, just the, just the overall number that's going in there vice uh, commercial use.
Uh, well, I can certainly comment on that. Commercial use would have seven to ten times more traffic than residential. That's a pretty well-known fact and I presented that information at the, uh, uh, board hearing for the east side, um, development and at the, um, uh, sketch plan. The, the, the traffic generation from commercial is significantly higher than residential.
But also commercial prep, commercial shuts down because they close. So it's not, it's not twenty-four hours. So.
Some don't. Some are twenty-four hours.
I don't think there was a lot here. Anyway, um, also in the packet, it stated because you brought, and you brought this up about the, um, well, number one, I, I, correct me, and how many parking spots are at the park? I counted, I, I think there was twenty-one.
I think it's something like that. We'll get that verified for you, but yes.
But we're, but routinely, if you look at the YMCA or over at the um, Palmer Ridge, I'm sorry, um, Lewis Palmer High School, there was way more than twenty-one cars parked there for a weekend event in that little soccer, the soccer areas or, uh, somewhere else. So I'm wondering.
There will be on, on street parking available on the public streets as well.
Again, then I worry about the accessibility for emergency vehicles to respond to an incident or people getting out because yes, I could say that in my development, we have a small park. They use that for practice and cars are parked all the way around it on the street, um, with kids running from the park to get into their cars with vehicles going speeding up and down. So I don't, I just don't think that twenty-one spots for that type of venue is enough. Um, because people are going to park in the street. So you're going to have a two-lane road that's gonna get squished down to people trying to get out because they're gonna park on both sides. Um,
But the road is designed, it has the width, it is of a classification that's designed to have parking on both sides and provide enough space for emerg- emergency vehicles to pass. That's how these roads are designed. Per the town's standards.
Now, also, also with the park, I'm just gonna jump into one of the, it said, it said in the photos, it showed the tiered seating.
Mm-hmm.
And it showed grass in there.
Yes.
So what happens when people sit in, sit on that grass? That's gotta be watered and fed, right? What happens when that grass? Who's responsible when that grass dies and it just turns to dirt?
But it's the metropolitan district's maintenance, so they're responsible. Maintain that, um, area.
Would it be better long-term?
But there will be a, it's, I mean, it's the top of a wall. So it's, it's a retaining wall. So there will be an area that's wall before it gets to the grass.
No, no, no. But in the photo, each tier showed green.
Mm-hmm.
The, the, essentially where, where people would, would.
Would sit down.
Would be sitting.
Would it be more, would it be beneficial to make that all concrete vice having grass where we have to provide? where we have to provide water to feed that, or someone's going to have to pay? I'm just, I'm just wondering about the grass when it dies, because it's going to happen. Now, you also, you also stated that the, although there's going to be a park on the east side of twenty five for the residents, they'll be able to use the park on the west side in that this.
It's a public park.
Public park.
Everybody in the town or anywhere is going to be a public park.
So I'm worried, I'm worried, I'm worried about accessibility, because there's no light, there's no crosswalk to go across.
There is at the intersection.
There's going to be a crosswalk?
Yeah, well, it'll be a signalized intersection that allows, yeah, which will have signals for pedestrians.
Okay, because in the packet, it states residents will walk, well, this is not just, not the park, but it says in the packet, residents will walk, ensuring an appropriate balance of life, work, and play environments within this median density residential development has commercial on the north and south side providing walkability for services. So I'm just looking at, I'm looking at the distance of a family that has to walk to go get, but we don't know what's going in on the north side except for Whataburger.
They have the opportunity to walk to these facilities, unlike many residents in Monument, which don't have the opportunity to walk to anything.
I don't see a lot of people walking from this residence all the way down to Walmart, but. And that's why, that's why having more, having, I'm a fan of commercial, not just because of the taxes, but because of the options, because yes, we are building a lot in the town of Monument, and the homes are being bought. But everyone is leaving the town of Monument, going somewhere else to go get services. They're not staying in the town of Monument because we have limited services.
And, and to, to respond to that, that's per my slides, which indicated that there is a, a significant supply of commercial land in Monument. There just isn't the demand, because there isn't the residential here to support it. So that's why they're having to go to elsewhere, because there isn't enough demand for, from the retailers to come here, because there aren't enough residents to support it within a defined geographic area. And in terms of your desire, as you just expressed, for more commercial, we are providing more commercial than the sketch plan required us to provide already. So we're not required to provide any more commercial.
Lastly, is you're saying, you're saying in your presentation that there is a need for this housing?
Yes. There's a need for more variety in housing generally, and very, very much so in Monument, which is predominantly single-family per your, per your comprehensive plan.
I, I know that there is one true need for the town of Monument, and I'm wondering if your client, Classic Homes, is willing to partake in the effort of workforce housing. Say twenty five percent of these homes, which would be thirty two homes, or twenty percent, which would be twenty five homes, for teachers, emergency responders, town staff who can't afford, they're not going to be, they still won't be able to afford a half a million dollar town home that's thirteen hundred to two thousand square foot. They're not going to do it. They won't be, they won't be able to juggle that. So I'm wondering if.
So you're talking deed restricted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm wondering if, that they would take a look into providing that for those, that workforce specifically, the opportunity to buy those homes at a less amount than the median price of what's going on. The benefit residents of Monument that truly need that.
Are, are you asking to put restrictions on them that don't exist or that our town doesn't have in code? I mean, what, what are you saying right now?
I'm asking if they're willing to take part in that. I'm not putting on a restriction. There is a true need for homes for teachers to afford to purchase, for emergency responders, for our, for our, our personnel that work here in, in the town, the, in-town staff. And this is something that I want to be asked henceforth at every proposed development. Will the developers take part in this? Yes or no? And providing a certain percentage, because I think that's a true need for the residents here in Monument. I know people leaving because they can't afford to stay here.
So how would, how would this workforce housing, call it process, how would this process work? The, so the planning staff would ask a developer at the, I guess at the sketch phase, would like, talk me through it? Like, what, how, how would this work?
That would be a standard question, a standard question when a developer.
Listen, this, this, this is not the place, right? So we can't, we can't shift what they're already doing, right? I mean, I guess you could ask flat out, do you want to partake in this? And they can say yes or no, and that.
And that's what I'm doing.
And, and that won't change the fact that they've gone through the various stages. We have to stick to what's technically legal, what we have to go through. You can ask all the questions you want, and they can say yes or no. Personally, I think this would be the wrong product for that because of the, the cost already. I believe that there is going to be a better product, and I could be wrong, and, and Mr. Stimple can correct me, but on the northeast side, there's a much tighter product, right? That's more dense already, the, the, the quads, I don't, but I don't know what they're.
You can't ask, that's already been approved.
Well, there, I don't, I don't know how far we are with that one yet.
Right now, no, it's already been approved. All that stuff's been approved, so right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, nothing is set in stone until, until it's stamped, approved by us. So everything is on the table to change. Everything is on the table that could be fixed. It's not too late in the process, and that's, that's the process. That's the negotiation that goes on throughout this. That's why it goes through the planning commission. That's why it comes to us.
I think the attorney's made it clear on what we can, that we can't change things at this point.
I'm not changing the development.
Right.
Asking the question.
Okay, so I guess the question has been posed to, to Mr. Stimple, if he would be willing to partake in some section of workforce housing in this development.
I don't believe this is the time or the place for that question. We have a sketch plan. We have zoning. We have brought forth a plan that meets all the criteria. We have a significant contribution to make the Jackson Creek Parkway. We have a lot of other things that have already, Mr. Kimpel, been set. That's something that needs to be planned and thought of on the front end. I have town homes that will be hopefully a little less expensive on the east side, I think that Mayor Lucind was referring to. We have four-pack homes. They'll be about the same price as midtown. But I would submit that Monument, where the average price is pushing eight hundred thousand dollars, is there a need for people to buy a four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollar home and live in Monument? You bet. And so, no, I'm not going to negotiate from the dais about a prescriptive zoning that frankly is not allowable under Colorado law. That's prescriptive zoning that he's asking for.
That's why I wanted to get clarity from the attorney. I, I just, I'm not disagreeing with the need. I just don't think this was the time personally for this to be done. We have other developers that are coming to town that they have no approvals yet, and you will have ample opportunity to get in front of them at the various stages for those kind of things.
I think it's important that that become the standard to be asked henceforth.
Well, I mean, as.
Be a discussion item for another time, and even something to vote on in the future.
Right. Um, now, for staff, we'd need direction for the entire county. Understand, because we've given you direction otherwise with the current land use bill that's going on.
But right now, we're discussing an ordinance, that, that would be a future discussion item.
Okay, so if we have, do we have more questions for the applicant? Because if not, I would, I would. Okay, can we go to, since it's an ordinance, I'd like to get our pub, public hearing.
Yeah, yes.
I would like to get audience participation unless you have something you want to ask.
I, I have some questions for staff. I have a couple of statements in general, but I, I understand the, the project, and I don't have any questions for the applicant right now. But I'm, but I might come back to that based on other things, just to keep it open.
Okay, so because this is a public hearing item, we will move to, if there is anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this ordinance. Ms. Hayes.
Good evening, councilmen, council persons, council people. I kind of get used to this council versus trustees. My name is Terry Hayes, and I am the executive director for the Tri-Lakes Chamber of Commerce. And this project, I was sitting there thinking, it's been about eight years. So I'm glad when you said twenty fifteen, my memory is still working well, because it's been eight years since we first talked about this project. I started personally feeling this property should stay all commercial, because we're Economic Development Corporation, that is what we do. You know what, things change. We have looked at this community for a lot of years, and we look at the additional property that's available, and we look at the location for this. And most importantly, we look at what people are coming to us looking for. And we feel that this mixed use, which mixed use does not demand that residential has to be subordinate to commercial, that is not a requirement. And I feel that each part of mixed use should fall into what the need is of the community. This council has been about compromise, especially Mayor Potem King. You've, you've said compromise is important between developers and between what we would consider the perfect thing to happen. This was a compromise back then. This was talked about for many years and thought about what is best for this property of land and what is best for our community. And this compromises what happened, and this compromises what was voted in. And it's a little, you know, sad to me that for, for planning commission people are now deciding this should be different. We need to change what's been doing, and yet classic homes, and I'm not even going to speak classic, I'm going to say in general, developers, when they go through their process, they're like any business, any business counts on rules, regulations, the way things are. When you switch up things in the middle, that's really not fair to them. If you guys feel that there should be a different mix between commercial and residential, talk about that for the future, for future developments, if you think there should be a certain percentage. I'm all for that, discussing it. I'm going to say I'm not for actually setting percentages, because I also think there should be flexibility on each prop, piece of property. Mixed use should not always look identical. And so you shouldn't have the same requirements for everyone. So from an economic development standpoint, we are very much in favor of this, because we are consistently seeing people come into the chamber and ask for different types of properties. The townhouses and the, the attached homes on Old Denver Road went like that. And there are more and more people that are looking, and they're like, where are the new developments? Where's looking for this? We have a lot of people in Woodmore that are living in these big houses with lots of property, and they're getting seventy and seventy-five years old. They don't want to leave their community, but they can't take care of their house anymore, and their kids don't want to take care of their house for them. And we have a lot of young families that are, young families that don't even have kids yet, that love our school district, want to move here and love the distance, because we know, let's face it, we are a commuter town. So a lot of our spouses, one's living in Denver, one's living in Colorado Springs. So this is why we are so popular for families to be here. But it shouldn't be families that are established and have teenagers and are making two hundred thousand dollars a year. They should not be the only people that live here. That's not healthy for a community to have only one type of resident that lives here. Healthy communities are mixed, people, mixed economic backgrounds, mixed everything. And a product like this, the products that they have that are kind of what I consider middle products, they're not single-family homes, and they're not apartments, but there's several in the middle there. There is a massive, a massive request, thank you, for that. And we're seeing it all the time, because being both the chamber and a visitor center, we don't just help people that are coming in and coming through the town because they're visiting. We help those people that are moving here, and we have a lot of people that are looking to move here. Where they're looking to figure out where to go. And we think this product is going to be very popular for them. The last thing is, most of our residents here, if you, we watch social media a lot for obvious reasons. I'm sure a lot of you do too. And you've seen the lists of all the businesses that people are going, what would you like if you, if you could bring to Monument or to the Tri-Lakes area? And the list is like this long. The vast majority of those are never going to come here with the amount of rooftops that we have. So I think rooftops is always a good thing. In order to bring more businesses, in order to fill the other commercial properties that are empty right now, we need those rooftops. Businesses need to see that they feel comfortable coming in, and they have enough people being there. So for all these reasons, we would recommend that you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in person that would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Okay, Mr. Anderson, I see we have a couple of hands raised. Would you like to? Sure. Mr. Hours, when you're able to? Mr. Hours, you can take yourself off mute and speak.
Good idea, isn't it? Okay, Commissioner Hours. First thing I'd like to point out is that even though my name is used very fluently in this conversation, all the rationale for the planning commission's denial, I read and spoke with the commissioners before the motion was made. And therefore, the rationale is not just Commissioner Hours', but it's brought into by three other commissioners. I'd just like to point that out, even though my name is used quite consistently. Now, with regard to sketch plan, it's always been the commission's understanding that a commit, a sketch plan is conceptual, and it is approved by the commission at the time that it is submitted based on the conditions in the area at the time it is submitted. And this commission approved, and in fact, I was very supportive of this whole sketch plan, because on the east side, we had all those homes that were already existing, and we didn't need commercial property backing up to those homes. But it was never intended that that same kind of thought by the commission went to the whole property once that was developed. In the rationale that's in your package from the commission, you will see subsequent to this plan, sketch plan being approved, there's been eight hundred and sixty-four units approved in three different PUDs since May of twenty twenty-one, which changes the conditions of the need on the Jackson Creek Parkway. With regard to all the commercial property that's on the west side, that does not serve all the people that are on the Jackson Creek Parkway. And there's a need for commercial at this point in time. And this particular development needs to consider that, and they changed, when we approved the sketch plan, you will notice that the commercial was located significantly different than when they made the change. So all I would say is, I think it's important you understand the commission isn't going, isn't about just changing things arbitrarily. The commission looks at the whole needs of the community, and they have changed since that sketch plan was approved in twenty twenty. Thus, that was the reason for the denial for this. In fact, we denied unanimously, if I remember correctly, the apartments that were put in on Lot Five. And there is just a need for commercial at this point in time. That's all of my comments, unless you have questions of me.
Mr. Hours. And we'll move on to. And we'll move on to the next person that's online. Mr. Koopman, you can come off mute and make your comments, please. Mr. Koopman, you can come off mute and make your comments. Okay, we will come back to Mr. Koopman if he can get off mute. Ms. Barlow, would you like to address the comments that have been made so far? Or Mr. Simple?
There was a couple of comments that I would like to point out, though, that but neither a planning commission. We we had no public opposition to this project, a planning commission. And as you can see that there is so far, no public opposition. Mr. Hours is obviously a commissioner and we had one person express support, which I think speaks to the fact that we're consistent with the sketch plan. We are doing what we said we would do. We haven't changed it. We are doing what we said we had would do. To Mr. Hours's comment that the conditions in the area have changed. We've struggled. He's mentioned this figure of 864 units before. Initially, we thought he was mistakenly referring to the number of units that were have been approved at Monument Junction. But reading his comments, I think he's talking about the broader area along Jackson Creek Parkway where other apartments have been approved. But bear in mind that area to the south, south of Higbee, has been planned as well. That's a planned development and it has Monument Marketplace right in the middle to service that area. And there is significant amount of vacancy in Monument Marketplace right now. So to suggest that that has brought about a need for more commercial, I think is is incorrect. And it is much more important that we have the house houses here, the rooftops, as Ms. Hayes indicated, to support the existing commercial that's there. Monument Marketplace is your main center outside of downtown and it's struggling because there's not enough residents there to support it. And the more residents you bring in, the better that facility will will perform. And as well as your downtown, if this is not far from downtown, it's it's only a mile from downtown. The Monument Junction, North End Monument Junction is a mile from downtown. This will have tremendous benefits to your downtown area. So to suggest that the area has changed so significantly in two, two and a half years from when the sketch plan it was approved, I think is is incorrect. And and perhaps a misguided reason for the basis and foundation of the planning commission's decision.
Mr. Kimble, do you want to address those? Okay. Sorry, Mr. Stimple.
I would love to. That's okay. I've been called worse. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is hard. I've been doing this 30 years. And you know, everyone likes their neighborhood. And and most people like their homes. And most people don't like developers. Let's be honest. And there that's it's a shame. We at Classic, we're really proud of the stuff we've built in Monument. We think we've built in and around Monument, some of the finest residential communities you have. Sanctuary Point, Forest Lakes, parts of Jackson Creek, Promontory Point. Monument Junction is going to be another one. There's been a whole lot of people that live in those communities that would suggest that we have filled a need. That need exists. This is really a strange one. Because I've never before had a project that we bought that we are not seeking any amendment to. All the land uses were set and zoned when we bought it. Take me out of the development business for a minute. Think of me as a manufacturer. Think of me as a local manufacturer who employs local people. You fulfill, you you a manufacturer buys goods and services, converts them and sells goods and services. If I'm trying to sell this product over here and the inputs change dramatically, whether it's because someone's asking me to lower my price, someone's charging me more money than I anticipated, or someone says, I'm going to give you a lot less of it than you were expecting. How how can you run a business? How can you run a business? That's what we're talking about here. We paid $15 million for this property. It's public record. We were allowed to have over 700 units. We are supposed to have a little over eight acres of commercial. And we're supposed to have a few acres of park. We have 500 and some odd units. We have 10 acres of commercial. So we've increased the commercial over the sketch plan. We're well within all the allowable densities. We've provided the 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 commercial that was anticipated. There's no public opposition. And yet it feels like it's a real reach in convincing people. We have professional staff that has reviewed it and is in support of the criteria. We spent two years and millions of dollars putting this plan together. You can't just say the rules change. Mr. Hours made a motion at Planning Commission to amend our sketch plan from the DAS. You can't do that. I would love to work with you on workforce housing. Let's find the right piece of property. Believe it or not, I've got product that these talented people back here are working on right now that I intend to unveil that I'm hoping I could sell for under $300,000. I don't know if I can get there yet or not, but we're working on it. I'd love to work with you on it. But not tonight. Not sitting in my project that I've got scrapers on, that I'm putting millions of dollars in the dirt that I'm in compliance on. I ask for your approval.
All right, we'll just go back real quick to, we have some online people. Is Mr. Koopman, I see you moved him up to presenter. Can he unmute and speak? I know, but he got, he came back in and moved right up to presenter. Mr. Koopman, are you there? Okay, in the meantime, we have somebody else with their hand up. You want to move them up? I I've got first name Laura. Would you like to unmute and speak?
Good evening. I am just curious as to what other
Can we get your full name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Lauren McGraw.
Thank you.
I'm just curious as to what other communities along 25 have homes that are basically built right on 25. I mean, I'm trying to think where, how close south of Monument there are homes built right on 25 as well as how far north of Monument. I don't know if that makes sense.
Okay, well, I'm sure the applicant took note of of that question and they'll respond here shortly. Thank you.
Yeah.
For staff. Mr. Koopman, are you able to come off mute now?
Can you hear me?
Can hear you. Thank you.
Yes, wonderful. I had to switch from mobile to a to a to a laptop here. Thank you. At the end of the day, this is not mixed use. I I I find it fascinating how this is getting pitched in in the term mixed uses there. The the planning commission is 100% correct that this does not meet the comp plan. It does not meet the definitions and the requirements and the intent in anything in the comp plan. The challenge is to to Mr. Stimple's point is we are this far along in the process and we are now faced with the consequences of the actions of the previous boards greenlighting this through. It didn't meet the definitions and the requirements then it doesn't meet the definitions and the requirements now, which puts you in a very challenging position as the council because if you approve it, it will not be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. It will be taking actions as a council completely polar opposite of of what we should be doing. On the other hand, they've invested time, they've invested money, they have been given the green light through multiple stages of this entire process. And i- it's a challenging position for you to be in and and I I don't know which way I would go if I were sitting up there. But it does not meet the definition of the comp plan. This is this is not mixed use at all. It doesn't meet the requirements, but there does need to be regard given to the fact that we may very well be faced with having to deal with the errors and the misinterpretations and the green lights of our previous boards. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do you like to respond? And then we will bring it back to the council.
So regarding Mr. Koopman's comment that this doesn't meet the terms of the comprehensive plan, that bridge has already been crossed. The sketch plan was approved as being compliant with the comprehensive plan mixed use designation of this property. It the mixed use designation requires a mix of uses, which this has. It has both residential, commercial, has parks, it has open space, it has a mixed use, it's more mixed use component. There are parts of it that say it should be predominantly commercial, but there are other parts that just require the definite actual definition just requires the mix of uses. So whichever way you cut it, it is a mixed use development. And the previous board did approve the sketch plan based on its compliance with the comprehensive plan. So that that has been determined that this mixed you, this mix of uses that is in this on the sketch plan and that we're proposing now and that we're consistent with with this midtown plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan. That determination has already been made. So really, Mr. Koopman's comments were a bit of a moot point in that you you can't. I mean, he did say the challenges were so far along. Yes, you can't go backwards. You can't go back and change that decision. That decision has been made. And with regards to Mr. McGraw's question about other communities that have homes right on I-25. I've driven I-25. I've seen other places where they do have residential. I can't place anything in Monument specifically. But I would say that a part of the justification for this residential along this section is that it's only a short section is actually adjacent to I-25. Then it goes on to the off ramp. As you know, the off ramp at 105 does pull significantly away from the highway because of the mouse habitat, so it loops right round. And so the residential component is really a little detached from the highway. There is also a berm that is adjacent to I-25. It's actually partially on C dot property and partially on this property. So there's quite a significant berm and then we also have provided the 50 foot buffer, which was a requirement of the sketch plan. And that was consistent with the previous zoning for the property as well. So we we have addressed the adjacency to I-25 with this development.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We're gonna
Let me ask her a question while she's here.
Okay.
So regarding that requirement of the 50 foot buffer, there's also a 50 to 100 foot buffer required on the southern border that there's not. Can you address that?
We didn't require, we we didn't identify on the sketch plan a requirement for a buffer along there because we based our, the only buffer we had was on I-25. So it went from 50 up to 50 feet, then transitioning to 25 feet. We did note that we did have some open space that provided a separation on the original plan. And we still have a a separation from the residential to the south. The only buffer requirements on the south side would be the 15 foot buffer that is in code, the 15 foot landscape buffer that's required between residential and non-residential. And that's usually placed on the resident, on the non-residential development, which would be the development to the south. But we do have about, it ranges probably 20 feet at the narrow part up to probably easily 15 plus feet as it goes around the corner.
I have it, but I have so many papers here, I'd have to dig it up, but.
But I know we did, I mean, to be fair, Mr. King, we did identify that there was that 50 foot separation on the sketch plan, but it wasn't a required buffer.
Okay. I have a few questions for staff. Did you want to take a five minute break? Is that what you're going for?
No, not at all. I'm going to keep pushing through. I just wanted, oh, you want a five minute break?
Yeah. I'm going to take a five minute break too.
We'll take a five minute recess. Okay, we're back from recess. At this point, we're going back to the council for questions or comments. Mayor Pro Tim King has some for staff.
So Ms. Booth, I just need to get some stuff on the record. So is there anywhere in Monument currently that has single-family residence with 10-foot front setbacks?
Didn't hear the end of that. That what?
With, that has 10-foot front setbacks on single-family.
I don't know.
You might not know the answer to any of these.
I don't know.
I'll ask them anyway. Is there anywhere that has three-foot side setbacks?
That I am fairly certain I can say no to. The three-foot side yards would be, they would require a firewall, which I understand they are providing. So 10-foot is fire separation. Anything less would require firewalls.
Right, and I understand that part of the code, so. Is there anywhere with 2,000 square foot single-family lots?
I don't know. I would feel like they're art. I don't believe so, but I don't know.
And then I'll let you go because I'm fairly confident I know the answers, but is there anywhere that has single-family homes with 40-foot heights?
And I don't know either.
Okay. All right. That's, that's all I really have.
Did you have something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been here through this whole process, and I know Mary LaKind has even at the Planning Commission point.
Remind me again.
I would, well, your name's been spotlighted all night. So yeah, why stop now? You know, I remember that number one, none of this is a surprise. We saw the plans. There's no like misrepresentation, bait and switch, or anything like that. In fact, going through this whole process, I remember our own Metro District President and other people in Village Center at the time, you know, begging for these types of parks and something with a field and this and that, and one of them, I mean, I remember that was public, not pressure, but public request to have, you know, these parks, which they've done. They've been more than flexible. They did match. I'm a former resident of Village Center. They matched the way Village Center flows very well from very small to larger homes. Our staff, again, recommends this with our attorney comments. The fact that this isn't a surprise, we're already into this and have, and have quote, "green-lighted" this thus far. And I think anything other than, and I think quite honestly, no vote would put the town at great financial risk. I, that's just my opinion. I, I don't have anything else to say other than that.
We can make comments.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I mean, we are obviously in the, we're discussing this.
Mr. Fury, go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right, well, as the, as one of the two F and Gs here on the board, I will say, when I first saw the plans, I kind of, it took me aback. But the presentation that you gave, as you were, you probably didn't see this, but as you were going through, I had some 10 different questions. I, you checked off all, most of my questions. So, and really, my concerns slash questions. So I'm in agreement with Jeff, Mr. Ruinello, that, Jim, sorry. It's late. It's 9:30, and I'm on no food. I'll claim ESL status. But I'm, but, and I'll agree with Terry Hayes that we do need roofs because I've succumbed to the, to the concept. Mike Foreman kind of beat me up on this. We need roofs to get, to get commercial. And I think this is, this is a good use of, of the area. Kudos to Mr. Stimple for, for the, for the park. I would recommend not grass on where there's going to sit because I don't see that grass lasting more than probably one season. But that, because that, that's going to get used. I can tell you that right now. Just look at the train park at Promontory Point. So I'm in favor. I think, I think this answers most. It's not perfect. We're not going to get perfect. And I think, but there's definitely lessons learned for us and the staff and the developers moving forward. But that's the key, is moving forward. If we're going to change yet again the rules, that's great. That's fine. But from moving forward, so I, I, yeah, I'm good. That's all.
Okay. I would like to address my name being brought up so often. You know, I did that at my own peril the night before the election to get on the Board of Trustees. And I know, well, I actually didn't remember that I made the motion, so thank you for, for reminding me. But I honestly believe that that time it was proper to rezone based on the historical fact that the piece of land had sat 40 years vacant. I know that wasn't the opinion of everybody, and that's okay. And I'm glad to see that something is being done with the land so soon after the rezoning because I too have heard over the years that without the rooftops, we will not get the commercial development that we actually want. And we have plenty of places right now that are sort of bare commercial-wise. So you've got some anchors and some other stores that are starting to pop up in those commercial areas. We know there's things coming to the west side of the interstate that are going to be more commercial-friendly. So, but before, so thank you for that. I appreciate you reminding me. Not that it's never not in the back of my head because there's always someone who gives me a dig about it, but that's okay. I do want to get clarity on the email that was sent to us from our attorney, Bob Cole, just to, if, I've already forgotten your name, Mr. Miller, right? If you could give us clarity on the email regarding the various, well, just, I'll let you go.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to talk a little bit about Bob Cole's email, which is in the record because I believe Ms. Booth referred to it as well as during the rest, the other part of the program. Essentially, we were asked a question earlier today as to whether sketch plans were changeable at this stage of the process. And the conclusion Bob reached that I talked to him about earlier today is that, you know, one of the things you have going on here is that you've changed your land use code since this particular development started. So they were originally zoned under your old land use code. You're now considering this under your new land use code because it's in effect. But one of the sections of the new land use code essentially grandfather's in approvals that you've already given. So this particular situation with this proceeding tonight, and, and just, I know you guys have, you've all heard this before, but this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. So you're sitting here only able to consider the evidence that your staff has given you in the record, testimony that you've heard tonight. You actually got allusions in the testimony to things that went on apparently way outside the process. To be honest, you shouldn't really consider those things in making your decision. And I know you, what I'm saying right now is not what you want to hear, at least some of you, because land use is one of the most frustrating areas, I think, for town council members because you get limited based on what has happened before. You don't have total power. I mean, yes, you can vote no, but the reality is at some point doing that does put the town in jeopardy of having that decision reversed by a court because the developers can go out and they can appeal into court. This is one of those situations where the zoning for this project has already been granted. They're here on a final approval so that they can move forward and record their plat, their final plat. But as long as they're in compliance with what has been approved and your staff has determined that they are, that does limit what you can do here tonight. And I know that's not what some of you want to hear, but, you know, I've got to give you advice whether you want to hear it or not. It's just my job. You know, and I'm happy to answer questions about that. You know, if anyone has any.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Miller?
I have a quick question. I don't know if this is appropriate to you or to staff, but what, I'm new here, so I'm trying to really make an informed decision. What is the purpose of the Planning Commission if we're not going to take what they said into account? Why have a planning commission? That's what I'd like to know.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond?
By all means.
Okay, that's a very good question. And in this particular situation, I think some of the things that the developer has said about that decision that the Planning Commission made frankly may not be legally defensible. You know, they were entitled to do what they did. They considered it. But ultimately, the buck stops here. You all have to make a decision based on, on the status of this current case before you. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, arguments have been made that conditions around town have changed and all of that. And that all may very well be something that you consider in future zoning decisions. And you may, you know, it's within your power to wholesale change zoning all over town. I'm not advocating you do that. I'm just saying you have that power. Landowners may not like that, but that's not before you right now. What's before you right now is this case, and that's what you're dealing with. So, you know, I don't know if that answers your question, but, you know, your planning commission gets the first crack at all of the cases that are filed. And yes, ordinarily, I advise our clients, our municipal clients, that they give a certain amount of deference to the planning commission because that's what they're there for, the planning commission. This is a situation where that may not be really the best course of action for you all on this particular case. And I'll probably have planning commissioners attack me as I walk out the door tonight, but-
Did you want to add anything? Because I saw you.
Yeah, are we on comments now?
We're commenting. You know what, we've, but, I mean, we're allowed to discuss until someone makes a motion. So you guys can discuss this or not, but we-
Well, I'm going to discuss it.
Okay, discuss away.
Okay, so I was on the Planning Commission when this came through. I was, in full disclosure, someone who voted against it based on density. My opinion really hasn't changed much since then because of how Jackson Creek Parkway is laid out and everything. There are two other commissioners that voted against it, voted against it based upon the lack of commercial. And they wanted to see Jackson Creek Parkway as a commercial corridor. I understand that there's not a big use for that. I would disagree a little bit that we don't have or won't have enough rooftops here because we've got about 30,000 people in this area. But reason I think is because we have North Gate 1 exit down, and they have a radius around them, and we will never have a radius around us because we have 36,000 acres of conservation easement to the north. So it's going to be a very difficult place for Monument to attract anything much more than destination-type, commercial spaces, in my opinion. And I do understand we have a lot of commercial here. This, this has gone down a long road, no doubt about it. I wasn't involved with any of the other approvals throughout this process, other than as a citizen. I will say, in fairness to Mr. Stimple, that, that I do see probably in need for this type of a product. I look at it basically as a townhouse without attached walls, and I can see where there would be people that would want to have that and not have to deal with yards and not have to deal with a lot of things. So I'm not against the product, but I hate sketch plans. And I've always hated sketch plans, and I hate them for this reason because people come in, do a presentation, paint a rosy picture, and then change them. This was, was proposed as better than commercial because it would, commercial would block the views, but there's a 40-foot-high wall of buildings going down, so that didn't work. It was also pitched that the apartments would go to the north so that it wouldn't block the views, and then that got shifted. The commercial that was going down Jackson Creek Parkway was supposed to be more along Jackson Creek Parkway, so you wouldn't have these big walls of buildings. And, and there's also a five-and-a-half-acre site on here that was supposed to be mixed use. And my opinion of mixed use is probably different. My opinion would be more like Mr. Fury, though, was talking about, where it's, it's a combined-type housing and commercial space because it was, it was put on there specifically as mixed use, and there's specifically zones for commercial. And I understand our code doesn't have a good definition of mixed use, so I have to let that go. But it was specifically put on there. It was specifically put on the plan, 12.6 acres for 5 to 12 units per acre. I understand they can go up to 715 units, but they're also asked for 405. They also stated that there would be up to 48,000 square feet of commercial in order to get the sketch plan approved. That's the problem that I have with these things. And by the way, this is not a, I'm not saying how I'm voting on this. This, these are just comments on the process in general. We, we have to get these more defined because we have residents yelling at us for these things that come up because they tell us it feels like bait and switch, and I can understand that to some degree because things get approved- things get approved and then they get changed along the way, and, and I understand it's not a perfect world. We're gonna change stuff. So, um, we don't have zoning that calls out a way to handle these ty- this type of product, other than the fact that it's a PUD, and PUDs are, you can ask for anything. But if we allow this product in here, which again, I understand there's probably a need for it. I'm not talking about that, but we do set precedent going forward, so, um, again, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm gonna vote against it. What I am saying is, this process needs to change, so that people know what they're getting into. This is the last piece of this property. It's a lot of it's water under the bridge right now. Um, there's things that I was okay with. There's things I don't like about it. And, um, we're down to the last piece, so I just wanted to get this kind of off my chest and on the record, and, um, go from there. So that's, that's all I have.
I, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number ten twenty twenty-three, and ordinance approving a preliminary final planned unit development for Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West, filing number one.
I second.
Alright, so we have a motion, and we have a second. This is the ordinance, ten dash twenty twenty-three. Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Protem King.
Okay, so I have to state why I'm voting the way I'm voting. That's just what I'm gonna do always, just so everybody knows, okay? Um, again, I was on the planning commission. I voted against this project. I think it's too dense. They were granted certain rights along the way, and those rights trump my feelings on, on this development. And according to our town attorney, you know, we're kind of in a place right now where we have to do, assume what the staff has stated as, um, being in substantial compliance, even though I might not, I might not agree with that. So for that case, I'll vote yes.
Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Um, I too will, I'm going to first say, I greatly appreciate the presentation, very detailed. I think, I believe there may be a need for these type of units. Um, however, because of not having able, not having the ability to review the traffic study, um, the shortfall of Jackson Creek, that the town has to come up with over eight million dollars, uh, I see major issues with the development and Jackson Creek itself. And then the, uh, uh, con-plan and the, uh, planning commission's findings, I vote no.
Councilmember Chronic?
I seconded the motion, and for the sake of the town, because I do believe in our attorney, and our, what our attorney has said, for the sake of the town, I vote yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
This is a tough one. I'm still very concerned about the traffic study, the, it's gonna be crowded. It's already crowded. And the fact that it does fail to meet eighteen dot zero two dot two six zero. Um, we were just given a study session that says, do not make hasty decisions, and at this time, my decision is no.
Mayor Lakind?
Is there an election tomorrow? Cause I think, I think I was the last person to vote for the rezoning also the night before the election. Um, I vote yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes five to two. We'll move on to resolution number thirty-three, twenty twenty-three, resolution approving a final plat for Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West, filing number one. Ms. Booth?
That was all.
This is the final plat for Monument Rid- Monument Ridge, Midtown Collection. I was going through plats to try to find lots with ten-foot front yard setbacks, so I apologize for that. Um, and we are also recommending approval of this one based on the approval of the PUD preliminary plat that you just did, preliminary PUD. I'm sorry, it's like.
Okay, uh, is there any comments or questions about this resolution? If not, then I will look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-three dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving a final plat for Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West, filing number one.
Second.
A motion and a second. Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Uh, for the same reasons I stated before, no.
Mayor Lakind?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
No, for my same reasons earlier. Thank you.
Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes five to two. Next up is public comments that are not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Is there anybody in the building that would like to make a public comment?
Still remaining.
Well, you're, you're sat, you're sat through here the whole time.
A good note, and I didn't stay here for nothing too, but to get in front of you guys and just say, um, thank you for those of you that have already reached out and replied to join us at the stable graduation coming up, where we celebrate some of our, uh, folks who are graduating one of our self-sufficiency programs. And we also, as a reminder, we have our upcoming fundraising event, uh, a week from, uh, tomorrow. Uh, that'll be at Boot Barn Hall, and Town of Monument has purchased a table, so hope to see many of you there and supporting us in our many events that we do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody else? Anybody online that would like to make a public comment? Okay, um, then we will close public comment, and we do not have any council authorization items that I know of. Anybody on the council like to make a comment?
Uh, yes, just a quick one regarding Jackson Creek Parkway and developments, um, that are going up on the, as we plan out JCP expansion, and rather than, than be surprised after the fact, can we build in, whether it's traffic circles or, or intersections with lights, can we build that in, assuming that we're gonna need it anyway? Is, is that possible?
If we wanna pay for it, yes, sir, we could. Definitely. Yeah, we have to, we have to meet warrants. That's the problem.
But you already know, their cost is baked into the number we need to sub, it's just, we can't go do it in advance of the warrant, right?
Exactly, and the twenty-three million dollars, the twenty-three million dollars does not include the traffic, uh, signals that are not warranted.
Can we plummet for, for future traffic service?
Oh, yes, definitely. Yep, we will do that. We're doing that up and down.
Look at traffic circles.
Yeah. We're, we're doing that on one oh five.
Oh, boy, here we go. Alright, is there any other council comments?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment.
Alright.
So I want, I, I do wanna say that I do genuinely appreciate the planning commission and their willingness to dive into this stuff. Before, it was kind of a rubber stamp organization, and I genuinely appreciate it. Um, I wish that I could get there with the motion that was there before. Um, but with new evidence that came up and with the town attorney suggesting otherwise, you know, it pushed me over the edge, but I want them to continue to do what they're doing. They come up with really good points. There was things that they came up with that I didn't think about, and, um, and I just wanna say kudos to them, so, um, march on, I guess.
Alright, I've got one comment before we wrap things up. So, one, I will echo what Mayor Protem King stated about the planning commission. Um, cause their job's not easy either. Um, and I hope we can get some process improvement. I would hope that members of the council would be willing to work with town staff and process improvement for everybody. We are still waiting, I think, for a joint meeting with the planning commission. I'd just have to figure that out. And since we're dealing with land use in this conversation, um, I will be testifying on Senate Bill two thirteen tomorrow, if they ever call my name. Um, last time it was a ten-hour wait. It'll be about this time tomorrow night. For those that aren't aware, the Senate bill has changed drastically with the majority of the preemptions removed. However, the mandates for housing assessments, which I think is one of the things that Councilmember Kimpel was referring to, are front and center, and will cost, will cost our town an awful lot of money, uh, of which we don't know what that dollar amount will be, especially given the fact that we're in budget season. We're gonna have to be very cautious in our discussions on budget in order to comply, should we comply with the state's mandates. Uh, so anyway, I will report back via email to everybody what goes on in tomorrow's, uh, hearing.
That, that was a good email, by the way, that, that you sent, and I thought it was spot on, so.
Thank you.
I would like to thank both our mayor and Mayor Protem for representing us well, and the last time, uh, after the ten-hour wait, that they did get to speak. They did a very good job. I was in the list, and they never called me, or I went to bed before they did. Um, yeah.
Okay, if there's no other.
I'd like to also echo what, what Councilmember Romanello just said, and Mayor Protem King. Thank you, planning commission. Um, I sat through a lot of your, um, sessions, and, uh, I appreciate everything you do, and it, it isn't easy. None of this is easy, but we will prevail.
Okay, um, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry.
I wanna make sure that we get the definitions of our roads clear, instead of what I heard earlier on saying, oh, we have a special definition for this road. I don't, I don't, I don't think that that's, whether, whether or not it was just joking around or a comment, or.
No, this section is a special definition. Because of the geometry of this road, we had to work on some special, um, criteria and waivers just for our section of Jackson Creek Parkway. So that's why I was asking what it wound up being.
Okay, cause when I looked in the Town of Monument's definitions, and I compared it with El Paso County, um, that seems like where it was being driven from, and that's what we should be using, and I, I would also like to see the actual traffic studies and the numbers, because I.
They've been ordered. I just talked to him. He's gonna have them out tomorrow. It's a large document.
I know.
So we're gonna try to get them out too.
And if you ever find, if there's something we forget to put in, email us. We can send you the link. We can tell you where it is. If you have questions about yards, let us know. We'll try to get that information, so I do have an answer for you when you ask.
And really quickly, pardon me, I wanted to circle back what you were saying, Mayor, about, I feel like the timeline should have come from us, not the developer. Not that it, I mean, it was there for us to see, but that would be nice to see. And I don't know, that paper that you were talking about, a timeline of events would be really helpful, so thank you guys very much.
Sorry, we have it in the staff report, but I've already sent emails. We're gonna create a new diagram to pop out somewhere, whether it be as an attachment or something, but we'll also include it in the, um, presentations.
I would love to make sure that you see the original emails and the requests and the formatting, because it was much different than what they delivered. So I would like to give it to you, and if you agree, cause it was more like a spreadsheet like the developer showed, which had columns. And I think most of us are used to looking at spreadsheets versus a Visio diagram, flowchart. And so it would be a lot easier to be able to pinpoint each step in the spreadsheet, and if you agree to it, you can show us an example, and we can move on from there.
We're here to serve.
Excellent. Is there any more comments? If not, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.